Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of July 8th. If you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Before we start our regularly scheduled program, we have a treat here tonight. We've got the Mount Hope High School Girls' Varsity Softball Team here, who is the 2015 Division III State Championships. Can some of you, all of you, representative of you, come up and share some information with us? I'd love to read this off and congratulate you. Who's here? How about if you stand and raise your hand so we can give you a round of applause? How's that? So I have a commendation I'm going to read to you real quick, if you don't mind. And we have some coaches here, correct? Come on up. What's that? Bashful. You're champions. Come on up. So this is an commendation awarded to, as we said, the Mount Hope High School Girls' Varsity Softball Team in recognition of their achievements in winning the 2015 Division III State Championship. As duly-elected representatives of the citizens of the town of Bristol, we hereby recognize and commend the participants of the Mount Hope High School Girls' Varsity Softball Team upon their great success and extend a heartfelt congratulations to them, an appropriate and proud community. And I see all of the names of the players here, and I see the coaches. Congratulations. It's absolutely spectacular to have winners, as we do, but specifically, you did a wonderful job with this. You showed leadership, you showed athleticism, professionalism. It's absolutely impressive, and you'll excuse me if I just give you another round of applause, if you don't mind so. Who would like to take this?
Congratulations.
Do you want to regale us with some great play that happened that won the game? Go up to the mic, please. We've got an extra minute, please. We'd love to hear it. We won't force you to do it, we just say...
Tell us about the final game.
Yeah, tell us about the final. Tell us about that winning...
The final game?
Go ahead.
So, well, it was two games. So we played in two championship games, the best of three. The girls came out really good in the first game, which was amazing. It was probably some of the best competition we've seen all season long, which was great. Came out, won that game, of course, had to come and play hard the second game. They did exactly what they had to do, strung some hits together, got some runs, more than the other team, which is what we were looking for. So, all in all, it was a great season. They went undefeated, so...
Undefeated. Wow. Coach, do you want to share anything? Do you want to share anything? You've got the mic in your hand.
Yeah, during the last four games of the season, I had laryngitis and I couldn't talk. So I used to talk to two coaches, and it was mumbling the entire time, but they understood. But we got along together. What was really great about the programs, it started in 2001, and in the 15-year history of the softball program, they only had two winning seasons. And the last five years, combined record was 27 wins and 79 losses. And when I was interviewed by ESPN Boston, and they asked me, said, "Why would you want to take over a team like that?" And my answer was, "Why not?" I mean, why not? It's a great challenge. We didn't know what we had in the beginning of the year, but they showed there was such great camaraderie, they tried hard, they never gave up at any point, and it was just an absolute privilege to coach. And we had a reputation, I think, that when we stepped on the field, others would say, "Uh-oh." And that's kind of nice, you didn't have to throw the ball around, all of a sudden it was, "Uh-oh." And it was all their credit. They deserved everything they've got there. Great bunch of young ladies. They represented Bristol and Warren in just a tremendous fashion with a lot of pride and professionalism in what they did. And they're just an absolute privilege to coach. And I'm glad, I'm so excited that you gave us something like this, because the girls really deserve it. So, thank you, ladies.
Congratulations once again. Thanks for taking the time, and we're truly proud of you.
Mr. Chairman, before you get to the consent agenda, there was a request for a continuance on item H1. This is the Linda Jones driveway matter. It's a request for a continuance until July 29th.
For my colleagues, I did speak with this applicant, and just setting up a meeting to go visit there again, see if we can clear everything up and make it smooth. So we need a motion to continue?
Sir, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
And the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next is submission of minutes of previous meetings. That's items A1 through 4.
I move that we accept those minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
And the next item is item C1. This is the second reading for adoption, continued from June 10th. This has to do with the overnight parking of certain types of vehicles.
Mr. Chairman, I might sound like a broken record on this, but as I said in the previous meeting, I feel that the jump from the current tonnage limit to seven tons is overly big. And the reason that I say that is that we always have had and continue to have some marginal businesses that should or should not be operating in residential areas, because we know the zoning rules are strict, but there still are instances of organizations and residents who lean into having a business, and therefore they want to have their business vehicles nearby, and if they don't have a big enough yard, or they don't choose to park in the yard, they'll park in the street. So my question perhaps to the solicitor is, why as much as seven tons?
I spoke pretty extensively with Ray Falco about this, and he basically said, based upon his observations as he traveled throughout the town, that in reality, this is what's happening out on the streets, and he felt that if this ordinance were truly enforced the way it is presently written, many, many people would be in violation.
What is the present limit?
Two thousand pounds.
One ton.
One ton.
One ton. Well, isn't that a rather big jump, from one to seven times that, seven tons?
Sure. And when I spoke to him about that, he said that this ordinance went into effect so very long ago, and that this was a question of catching up with it. As you know, I provided a diagram that he was kind enough to provide to me on what a seven-ton truck was.
Well, we appreciate the diagram, but let me ask you, if it's not too personal, you have a nice car. What does it weigh?
I couldn't tell you. It's probably a Class 1 vehicle, I assume.
I think my car weighs about seven-eighths of a ton. I have a truck that weighs maybe 1.2 tons. Why do I need seven tons?
Well, I think I can speak to some of that. If you look at some of our... Let me back it up like this. Our Home Occupation Ordinance states that you can have a vehicle up to 14,000 pounds, and... Which is the seven tons, obviously, that we're speaking of. I believe that, obviously, this coincides with that. That would be step one. Step two is, we had initially talked about Class 4, which would go from 14,000 to 16,000 pounds, and after discussion on the council, we decided that Class 3 was more appropriate to limit that class. The vehicle that we're speaking of here would be a classic dump truck, a four-to-six-wheel vehicle that a lot of our landscapers use, and that would seem to be most appropriate there. Now, I don't believe that most of our landscapers actually park on the roads. We're talking about smaller companies. That doesn't mean that larger companies don't park them every once in a while, but this seemed to coincide with that. And I think, too, this is a really important point, is that we've had 2,000 pounds on the... Or one ton on the books for a while, and it came up from a concern a resident had expressed. So I don't know if this is going to open the door. Certainly, it potentially could, and I think, like most of what we do, we have the opportunity to revisit this, if in fact it opens up a Pandora's Box.
Does the police chief have any opinion on this issue?
I think I'm going back to check my notes, and I think at the previous council meeting, this had been discussed, and I had asked that you allow me to do a little research and report back to you.
That's right, yes.
If you recall, I didn't want to state earlier. However, I didn't do the research for this meeting, as you can imagine. We were a little busy during the last two weeks. I will be more than glad to report back to you at the next council meeting. And what I will do is compare us to comparable communities that we normally get some data from and report back to you. That would be the best I could do for you.
Well, I think we're all totally understanding that you had your plate so full leading up to the fourth. We understand that. Well, Mr. Chairman, would you be willing that we continue this matter?
Absolutely.
Well, in that case, I'd so move that we continue to the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I just want my colleagues to be mindful that when we talk about the seven tons, we're talking about the gross vehicle weight. So to go by the manufactured specs, when you're looking at this, you have to go by the capacity of the gross vehicle weight in comparison when you're looking at these vehicles.
So your point is to say that it's the weight of... It's fully loaded with all cargo...
Yeah, one can judge it as looking at it at a larger scale than what it is, when you take those perimeters into consideration.
Can you talk about the pounds? I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second to continue, so allow the chief some time to do some research on this. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next item is ordinance 2015-10, as amended. This is the second reading for adoption for the so-called Tax Stabilization Incentive Ordinance.
I'd like to commend Diane once again on the fine job for condensing this ordinance and make a motion that we approve the second reading of ordinance 2015-10, chapter 27 of this tax stabilization plan.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
I just have one thing. I know that in the last meeting, we spoke about having a threshold to go to 10 years. So instead of having all dollar figures possible for the 10-year, have it up to 500,000, if I recall correctly. So let me say that in another way. You need to hit 500,000 or more to qualify for a 10-year tax stabilization. I know that we had a little bit of discussion about that. My goal on that one was that not every single one was a 10-year, but it would still give us the flexibility that we wanted and that we all actually wanted very much. Thoughts?
I concur, Mr. Chairman. I think it reduces the amount of confusion in the ordinance, and also down the road, we don't get into the issue where some people say they got the five-year, others got the 10, and wondered why. I think having that kind of cutoff really cuts down on that confusion, so I concur with you, yeah.
Any other discussion?
I would just like to comment that, you know, I support this because we need to get it done, and it's been floating around for a long time, and it's been very... It's much more simple now than it was when we first got it.
Oh, definitely.
But I just want, to be consistent, I just want to say for the record, I do think there should be an administrative tool. And I've been listening to the debate that goes on from time to time about providence in the state and in other communities, as far as, you know, providing this, where people know exactly where they stand, and they don't have to wait for council approval for whatever reason. And so I think that that would be a better way to go, especially if we go with a Economic Development Officer position. So... But I will support this, because we just need to get this off the mark and get moving with it. But I think we should keep that in the back of our mind and see if that's not something we should move to.
Any other discussion? Paul, see, would you be amenable to amending your motion to include the $500,000 minimum for a 10-year?
That would be my motion.
I think that's fine.
That was yours?
Yes.
Sorry, Counselor.
So I will amend the motion as per the chairman specified accordingly.
Can you just tell me exactly where this is?
It's not there right now.
No, I know, but where would you be amending it, like, you know?
In section 2C, it talks about a $250,000 threshold, so we'll just amend that section to make it clear that 250 will apply for five years. It would be a 500,000 threshold for the council, consider 10 years. I'll make that amendment for you right in the...
Just for a point of clarity for everyone, the tax stabilization is a tool for the town to use to attract new businesses, not only attract new businesses, but for current businesses who want to expand and give them stabilization for any improvements that they do. Stabilization means, whether it's a phase-in from zero all the way to 90% over the 10 years to full tax. So it's a way of us attracting new businesses, and as important, maybe more, keeping our current businesses and having them expand. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you. Nice job, Diane.
Yeah, excellent.
The next item is item C3. This is ordinance 2015-11. This is basically an administrative change for the municipal court costs. There's a memo from me explaining the need to do this. Basically, what happened was that several years ago, the state increased the court costs from $25 to $35, and we never realized the ordinance wasn't completely compatible with that. So that... We're asking for this amendment, and also, we sort of put a kind of an automatic reconsideration paragraph... Or sentence in the paragraph that would allow it to change automatically should the state change again, so that we don't have to come back again to make that change. This is the first reading of that ordinance.
Make a motion, this constitutes the first reading.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Okay. The next item is ordinance 2015-12. This is the first reading of this particular ordinance. There's also a memo from me relating to this particular amendment. This was something that the fire chief was looking for in order to provide some, I guess, basically a standard for what would be considered appropriate for open burning. The previous ordinance was very ambiguous, and this actually spells it out as to what would be allowed.
Just a question on that, though. Is this a Bristol invention as language here, or is this somewhat relating to state law? Is it similar to any state law?
Well, there's not really a state law on it, but it is similar to ordinances of the towns. This one, I'm very familiar with because it came from Barrington, but in putting together that ordinance, we looked at ordinances from other towns and tried to pull together best practices.
So we recognize that this language has been tested?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Can I ask how this is actually going to be monitored? I'm most interested in the chimneys and the... What is allowed? For example, you have, you know, burning only clean wood. I mean, I know people who have taken scrap wood and that's... And build a big, you know, use it, and that's what they use. I'm not sure that, you know, while I think it's a good idea, especially in, you know, in densely populated areas such as downtown, you know, people are actually going to have a garden hose connected and things like that. Is that something that, if you have a call, or if it's something, if you see one, like, how would you let people know that all of that is out there?
I believe the biggest part of this, it gives you some guidance, gives us some guidance to look at something. You're just the distance from your house, your neighbor's house, the property line. And also, as you said, Mary, the people will burn anything. And the current nuisance law says you can't burn trash, you can't burn anything. What I tell everyone is that if you're doing something that's going to affect your neighbor, we're going to have you put it out. So for instance, on a nice day, you hang your laundry out, somebody's over there burning off something, it's just causing a bad scene, we're going to have them put it out.
Well, I mean, everything, like leaves and all of that and rubbish, it's all still totally banned as it has been in the past.
That's correct.
So, I mean, I support all this. I think it's good. I'm just curious as to, you know, hopefully, there'll be an article in the paper about it, and people have some ideas, but I do think that a lot of people will just light anything, and you're in an area with lots of old homes and lots of old trees, and it can be really dangerous sometimes. So, I mean, I know that if someone calls you or the police, they'd be able to look and see it, whether or not, go back to this and let people know what the ordinance is. But would this give you the authority to just, if you saw somebody burning that, to check, or only if there's a complaint?
We react to the complaint initially, but if you're driving by and you see it, we're going to stop, and the guys will call me or the duty chief and evaluate it, and for safety purposes, as you say. If it's doing it under a pine tree, that's not really a good thing to do. So we evaluate it for its safety purposes. Is it affecting the neighbors? And if so, we're going to have them put it out.
All right, thank you.
I had a concern... I agree with Councilman Perell. I support that we need to be able to control this, but I actually took a measuring tape to my fire pit, and I'm out of compliance. So... And I only have a small... So I obviously understand that you have to have some kind of guidelines, you have to... And it says under two feet on there, but I was concerned, too, is how do you enforce such a thing? And, you know, it mentioned about clean wood, certainly I understand it, but how do you make sure that people are actually doing those things?
I believe going forward, what it'll give us is that people call the office all the time, and we have nothing to tell them, other than to abide by what the manufacturer's suggestion is when you buy something such as that. This will give us what the town thinks it should be, those dimensions and they were implemented, from the property lines from any building and so on.
So people do call you and ask for advice before they purchase these?
Where can I put it? And I can't give them anything other than to suggest if you bought it from the fireplace store, they give you a manufacturer's recommendation, which you should abide by, but we do not have anything prior to this that moves you out.
Chief, what if a resident has, like we used to at our old house, one of those brick kind of outside fireplaces? How does that coincide? How does that work in something like this?
Safety first. I'd make sure that it was safe, you know, because there are old ones around town, you can see them. Not many people use them. But it's got to be graded, so you can prevent any sparks from going out, you know, a screen over the top and such. And if it's still safe and not all crumbly, you can use it. It could still be used as a cooking vehicle. And then, again, it's the clean wood usage and things of that nature that would allow you to have a nice time with your family and not affect your neighbor.
Chief, from the standpoint of the environment, I really like how you call out open burning, any garbage, refuse, debris, trash, animals, fish, vegetables. I think it's great, because, you know, people burn types of trash, and it's harmful to the environment. So I just, all in all, I like the ordinance. It's very easy to read, and it's very clear. I support it.
Thanks, Lou.
What's the council's pleasure?
I move that we... This constitutes the first reading of this ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that constitutes first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item C5. This is ordinance 2015-13, and basically, it makes a slight alteration to the criteria for membership in the historic district commission.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to somewhat vacillate on this, because I've thought about it since reading this. You know, we used to have a lot of complaints regarding historic zoning, about the insensitivity to the needs of people who live there. That seems to have gotten somewhat corrected, but if that is a problem, we would like to have a very strong representation on the historic commission of those who live in the district, so that they'd be cognizant of the sort of complaints that come forward, and maybe would be sympathetic. On the other hand, I think the clerk's point that you'd like freedom to gather in as many candidates as possible has some strength. But I just would like the council to think about whether we want a majority for living in the district, or whether we prefer not to have a majority from the district itself.
May I comment on that as well? I have some concerns with this, as it is written. I think that it says here, you know, "At least two of whom, preferably three, shall be residents of the district." And then it would say, "Or property owners," and I think this needs to be redone, and it needs to say that a number, like a minimum of one or a minimum of two must reside in the district, and that third person could then own property. I think it's like going down like... It's kind of a concern down the road. I understand why the clerk has asked for this, because it is hard to find people within that district sometimes, but what I'd hate to get to is that we're at a point where there's not one single person on that board that lives in the district, and I think that would be a very, very serious problem. So I think this needs to be redone personally, to put some limits that we know we have at least a person or two.
Can we talk about the practical side? You currently, as of your next meeting, will have only one person who actually resides in the district who'll be on the Historic District Commission. One person who recently moved out of the district into a neighboring property was your other person. So you... And you have no other candidates. So you're not going to be able to reappoint that person. That's the first concern. Okay? And the second concern is you have nobody else in the bullpen.
But Lou, my point is that we can have some people who have property, you know, or who own property, and it's just like that... It shouldn't be no one that lives there, when you're putting on these restrictions on people.
The problem is, it's... This is a practical problem.
No, I understand that, but...
And the, you know, and I was there when this was initially crafted, and to be honest, I'd prefer to have everybody who's on that commission be part of the district and have some skin in the game. But the problem is, for one reason or another, there are no applicants, and you're not going to be able to function. So this was a practical amendment that I suggested when I realized what had happened.
Have we done very strong advertisement of these openings?
No, I mean...
You have advertised.
We advertise every time, you know, but there has not been people coming forward for, say, for... Maybe you want to do a little analysis as to why that might be occurring, but the problem you have right now is that you're not going to be able to operate your commission because you have nobody.
Well, will this new language satisfy that?
It will.
Need? Well, my feeling is that maybe we should pass this with a view towards trying to get more interest, where we might be able to modify this back later.
And certainly, we're talking about minimums, not maximums, so the council can appoint, you know, can have a sort of a personal goal toward filling the commission up with residents. That is something that is a... Certainly something that's well within the scope of what can possibly be done.
We could still appoint everybody from the district.
The problem is, when you impose...
Yes, you can. Yep.
Yeah. When you impose a minimum, then you're kind of trapped, because if you don't have the applicants, and you may have a perfectly suitable applicant that happens to live one house outside of it, and still may be very committed to what happens, that's the problem. And I understand exactly what the problem is, because like I said, even as a... One of the people that crafted this 30 years ago is that it is a... It's a great idea to have participation from within. The problem is, they're just not coming.
But why can't you make an exception? I mean, if one person moves, you know, one house away, to me, I'd rather make an exception than to say that nobody has to live in the district. I mean, I'm not saying they all have to be. I'm saying we could put at least a minimum of one. I mean, there should be at least a... There should be at least one person that we can guarantee is on there. You're saying that at least two, preferably three of whom shall be residents or property owners. I think property owners is okay. I don't have a problem with it, but at least one person should be on... Live in the district.
Yeah. I mean, it was just, it was an ease of the language in order to do... The discovery came up just when this thing was going to press.
Well, with those explanations, I would move that we accept first reading of 2015-13.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any other discussion?
I agree that if you're going to make the rules, you need to be subject... I agree that if you're gonna make the rules, you need to be subject to the rules, and certainly I understand the practical end of things, but this is a wonderful moment to say, "Are you interested in being part of our historic district commission?" If you are and you're not sure what you have to do, you can call anyone at town hall. You can call any of the five people that you see here and all the people that are surrounding and say, "What do I need to do to be part of this commission?" It's extremely important, and I say that. Ask someone who lives there. Ask someone who had to get permission to do something and you'll know how important it is. So, if you can bring level-headedness with colleagues, then it would be an extremely valuable position to fill. So, we have a...
I believe there were valid points, Councilman Perella, but also I'd like to thank our town clerk because of the solvency of our commissions at this time to keep our town afloat. We can always amend ordinances later, see need fit. If there's more communication and to your points to change, but to keep things going at this point, for the time being, I think it makes sense, and I'm sure the next meeting, if anybody helps, wants to add their concerns, we could do it at the second reading. So, thanks.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm opposed.
One opposed. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item D1. This is the petition of Roberto's 450 Hope Street. Request council consideration for dancing and entertainment license.
Well, I don't quite understand this request because while they did provide a bunch of diagrams, I would like to see a further explanation of what this really means.
Mr. Vanderhoof is here, correct?
What time, what day, what thing?
Good evening.
Good evening.
If it pleases the council, I would like to ask Paul Del Nero to come up to the podium. Paul is a local gentleman. He and his wife Kathy live here in town, and he's a jazz musician who'll probably be entertaining people at my establishment if it pleases the council.
Absolutely.
Paul?
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could state your name for the record. Thanks.
Sure. I'm Paul Del Nero.
Welcome.
And would you like me to explain what Bob and I have been talking about? First of all, maybe? I guess that maybe.
Well, yeah. Well, let me give you a little bit. Halsey just mentioned the concern is we're not sure what the dancing... Obviously, we know what a dancing and entertainment license is, but we were hoping for some clarity on what was to happen, where it was gonna happen, how long it would happen, the volume, how many people would be there.
Right, right.
Dates, times?
Dates, times.
Date and time is my question.
I'm going in the wrong direction with this.
We're not looking for dancing. I know it's part of the ordinance, but we're really just looking for a little light jazz.
Right.
Paul can...
Yeah. This... I imagine everyone's familiar with Roberto's with the... So, we're talking about having a duo or a trio possibly in the area, in the entrance where there's a couple of high tops against the window. So, right in that area, taking the two high tops out and doing a small, very light acoustic jazz. I'm a bass player, so it would be bass or with guitar or bass with piano, and it would be... It's essentially acoustic music. There is slight amplification, so to talk about the volume level, these are very... These are amplifiers that are essentially the size of a lunchbox. It's very light amplification and it's only to fill out the sound. It wouldn't interrupt anybody at the bar or the dining room having a conversation. It's very much background music unless you were interested in listening to it.
Would this be within the presence... Presence or would it be outside?
We're talking about inside.
Inside.
Yeah.
That's important.
Yeah.
Where you are.
So, right inside the entrance, in the bar area, actually.
What time are you planning on starting and ending?
Well... I would say probably maybe eight to 11. We're not a late night place. We also, in the diagrams that I showed, that I drew up for you folks, is the... In the banquet room, in the far back of the banquet room, we might consider that too if we have a rehearsal dinner and they'd like a little jazz music. But it's very low key. We don't expect dancing. We just expect a little background music just to entertain the guests. And again, we're not a late night place. We'll be...
Well, Bob, you have a great record there, but this is a sort of a thing that if we were to approve it, we'd probably wanna do it on a provisional basis, see how it works out.
Sure.
Is this every night or a few nights a week or...
No. No, no, no. We would select maybe a Tuesday or a Thursday night, probably not on the weekends. I mean, this is obviously to help generate business, so we don't need it on a Saturday night. So, this would be probably on a Tuesday or Thursday night and maybe not even in the summertime, just in the winter.
So, when you say probably, for the clerk's clarification, are you looking for a seven day? That way you can choose the day you plan on doing it.
Well, we'd like to have the option to have it at any time.
Don't include Sunday. Never include Sunday. That has to be special.
Other than Sunday, yes.
I think it would be...
No, we don't wanna be limited because, again, if we have rehearsal dinner on a Saturday night and they'd like a little jazz or an acoustic guitar or something, then we could allow that. We've had requests for it.
I'm just trying to get the clarity on if this motion went forward on how it would...
Right, but just so there's an understanding, the license that you grant is only for Monday through Saturday. Sunday, they have to come in for specials. You've seen that on occasion.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
So, what we've heard is eight to 11, not on Sunday. That would be a special permit, obviously.
Yeah, that's fine.
We've heard that it will be acoustic and very light amplification.
Yes.
And it would be not both at the same time, so you wouldn't have music in the front and the back at the same time, correct?
Um, why not?
I'm asking.
Well, I don't know. As an example, if we have rehearsal dinner in the banquet facility, we might have something there, but we might also have something in the dining room. But the way... In the banquet room, it's all the way in the back, so there's no...
Very disconnected is what you're saying? Okay.
Yeah. But also, Paul and I talked, it probably won't even be able to be heard from the street unless the door is open with people coming and going. You might be able to hear that there's music, but you hear that now with the siren system that we have. So, it's not gonna be playing any louder than what we play it now.
What time do you... What time do you close?
The kitchen closes at 9:30 on the weekends, 9 o'clock on the weeknights, but people do linger. I mean, if you came in at 9:30 on a Saturday night, we're gonna serve you, so you might be there until 11:30.
Chief, could you... Do you have any wisdom that you'd like to share on this one?
At this point, I don't see it to be a problem if, exactly what the gentleman's saying, it's gonna be indoors. It's very controlled. I was... The only recommendation I always make is what Mr. Herashev was about to make, that we do this on a trial basis as we do for everyone. We'll monitor it. If there's an issue, we'll address it with the gentleman and you'll be the next to know.
Yeah, and just so you know, we're not looking to bring the college kids in. That's not the kind of restaurant we are. We're looking to entertain people, grownups.
Just for clarity, was my question to you, Chief? The second chief, is Mr. Vanderhoof?
Yes.
The musicians, whether it be two or three, are gonna be in place of the tables that are currently there?
Yes.
So, maximizing that space, there's not gonna be additional space for egress, for fire exit or the entranceway? That it's not gonna be additional?
We won't interfere at all with either...
That was my question for you of, you know...
I would appreciate a look at the diagram to evaluate it in that fashion, but also, one of the things that we need to be advised of is that when you go through any amplification, it has to be tied into the fire alarm system. If you're gonna do two locations, those specific outlets that are used for any amplification have to die when the fire alarm goes off. So, we need to evaluate where it would be and what would have to happen and how it gets rigged up.
Oh, Chief, would you be comfortable if we pass this subject to your subsequent approval of those details?
Glad to hear it.
Is there...
Hold on one sec. Councilman Perella was gonna say something.
Just had one quick question maybe for Mike. I mean, is... I'm not... I'm not sure if there's a legal way to put a limit on light amplification. I mean, I know what it is and it's fine, but I just... I don't think anybody wants it to turn into anything more. And my concern, does this cease when, if a business changes hands?
Oh, yeah. License only goes to the person, your wife, so that's an easy one. If you wanna make it subject to acoustical as what they are proposing to, you can add that to the motion.
So, that is... Would cover the light amplification anyway? Does that mean...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, this conversation started by saying that you're a good neighbor and a good business owner, and we've never had any issues with you. So, this is, for me personally, is it makes sense and it sounds like we have a motion coming to that effect, to be quite honest. So, Halsey or Tim?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Roberto's dancing and entertainment license Monday through Saturday with the time of 8:00 and 11:00, acoustical, with the provisional condition that we will monitor and make sure all laws and ordinance are being followed.
And with the fire chief, if you would.
And the fire chief would take a look at the plans and approve those with his condition on that.
So, the only thing I would just ask is, so the review would be six months from when you take out the license because you might not do it in the summer, so this might not kick into October, right? Or so when... So, we put six months or three months now, it's not gonna be very helpful to really gauge it. So, how would we determine that?
Well, I would second the motion with the provision of the six months review.
I mean, would it be six months? Is that...
Six months is appropriate. Would you agree with that? Is that you'll be... That'll be ample time?
I have no problem.
You would've started it by then, right?
Yeah.
Probably.
Six months from date of issuance.
Six months from date of issuance is what I heard. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
We look forward to it. Thank you.
The next three items are all requests for one day dancing and entertainment licenses from the Newport Music Festival for their... I think they're doing this annually at the Blythewal Mansion.
Mr. Chairman, would you be willing to lump together D2, D3, and D4 since they're so similar?
Yes, please.
I would move that we approve these at that very fine institution of Blythewal.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next one is item D5. This is the petition of captivation 676 Hope Street. Request council consideration for a holiday sales license. You have recommendation provided by the town administrator and chief of police to approve.
Upon the recommendations of all the department heads and administration, according to all the ordinances and state regulations, I make a motion to approve this holiday sales license.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is from the Bristol Oyster Bar. Request council consideration for a modification of the recently approved Class B alcoholic beverage license, expanded service area to include a service bar.
Come on up, Mr. Seabright. Evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here in front of you tonight to ask for an outside liquor service bar for both liquor and for some food for the Bristol Oyster Bar.
Well, I'll start off. I know that there was a lot of conversation after the last meeting. I know that we've... We all certainly had some residents call us and otherwise about what was there and how it changed. Today's is certainly, you know, much different than when it was a couple of weeks ago. Specifically, the structure was moved from the front of the building to the southeast corner, I guess, of the other building. Still on your property, of course. So, you're asking for approval to... And actually, before, you did ask us for approval for a shucking bar. That was my recollection there, and you're in front of us this evening to ask to serve light food?
Yes, I'd like to do a light lunch menu consisting of sandwiches, cold sandwiches and salads, along with the raw bar menu.
So, for clarity's sake, light sandwiches means you're not cooking out there. You're just preparing the meat or whatever it happens to be.
Correct. It would be like a lobster roll or something like that.
Gotcha. But you're also in front of us for a service bar request, too?
Yeah, more so really for the service bar, for the alcohol outside. My restaurant in the evenings is pretty well maxed out as far as the kitchen and the bar, and although I was granted 32 seats out there, I'd have a lot of difficulty servicing them without sacrificing the service inside of the restaurant. I just don't have that ability with a small kitchen and a small bar to operate outside.
Help us understand what that would look like because I know for myself, I do not and would not say okay to someone sitting at the bar. It's our downtown. It's our thoroughfare. It's a historical area. So, tell us why this... How this would look.
In my proposal, I asked for both patrons and waitstaff. In a perfect world, I'd like to have patrons, but that's not a necessity. Mainly, what I'd like to have is the waitstaff being able to access the service bar, get some drinks and be able to serve the patrons at the table. The service bar would be tucked up around the corner, as you referred to earlier, and I'd like to get three or four large arborvities and basically plant a wall on the west side of it, and it would disappear from you from the road entirely, basically.
So, I know that we all have some questions on this, but just from both of our chiefs is that knowing the changes here, could you weigh in on your thoughts on this?
I'm having a problem understanding why the alcohol has to be served outside, prepared and served.
Yep. My bar inside is a small bar. Behind it, there's not a lot of room, and when we're full inside, I don't have the ability to get another bartender back there and serve another 32 seats, which I had, which I was granted a couple of months back on my outside patio. I just physically don't have the ability to serve the outside like that from an inside bar.
And you weren't visioning that happening is what you're telling me? Because, I mean, obviously, you asked for the 32 seats knowing you were gonna serve alcohol, that alcohol had to come somewhere.
Last time I was in front of you, it was my fault, I'm sure. I misrepresented in some way that you didn't understand that I was at... That I needed alcohol outside at that point. I thought I made it clear, but apparently, I definitely didn't. But I've known right along that I wouldn't have applied for any of it if I was not gonna be able to have alcohol served outside.
And a point of clarity for this is that we... This council did approve the consumption of alcohol out there, but not the service of alcohol, and that's where the distinction is this evening. But the chief's was...
Right. And that is my concern, is serving alcohol from the outside premises. It's worked great the way we have it in place now where every restaurant that we've allowed outdoor alcohol to be served comes from inside. It's controlled. There's no question. It's going right to a table. That's where it's gonna be, not at, you know, a bar stool or anywhere else, someone hanging around waiting for a table to become vacant, whatever it may be. It appears to work very well the way that it's been laid out. I would ask that we continue to do it that way, that we keep it indoors and serve the outdoor clientele through the indoor policy that's in place. It works well the way it is now. I wouldn't recommend we start opening doors that we're not gonna be able to control later.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that advice from Chief, and I very much agree with it. And, you know, not only in Bristol, but most places where there is outside dining, both in America and in Europe, mostly the bar distribution occurs within the premises and waiters and waitresses go out. But I'd also like to say that, Peter, I'm very appreciative of your cooperative attitude on all these matters. I appreciate that you were willing to modify the original construction that, in my opinion, that has many others defaced the building, and you've corrected that, and we appreciate that. And we want you to succeed. We admire the insight of your establishment. It's been great. But one of the visits I made with you, we did investigate the possibility of a small but doable service bar to the left of the main entrance where there's another door that waiters and waitresses could pick things up. And this is an issue of more importance than your one establishment, as the chief is referring to. We have, as a council and as a town, in the last few months, liberalized a number of things in these sorts of regards about allowing outside dining. It was initiated near you and at nearby restaurants, and we've expanded that. And we're in a trend to be user-friendly but feel a great need to control it. And I personally believe that if we were to authorize this, we'd have a lot of other applicants coming to us and say, "We want a bar outside. There's one already. We want another one." So, I'm very much against approving your request for that, while at the same time, I do believe you could, with a minimum inconvenience, draw the drinks in that alternate place and let the waiters and registers bring it around to the...
To that point, Halsey, it would be right in the middle of the fire egress.
A big button?
It's right in the middle of a fire egress. Uh, it's right in the middle of a fire egress, the, the spot that we're referring to.
Well, indeed. Some details of that would have to be worked out, but I would like, I would hope that there's a solution where you and your visitors would be satisfied without us having, as a town, to break down the barrier that the chief refers to, where we do not allow outside bars.
Just for, just for discussion, when you compare to other applicants coming in front of us, I believe other applicants that are restaurants are on their private property that have service bars here in the town of Bristol. I think this case in front of us is private property, so he's trying to utilize the same situation. And then, as you mentioned, Councilor Hevershaw, you are absolutely right of the road we're going down, and as a business owner, he has every right to be in front of this council from his private property. We did expand his seating for the outside dining and the consumption of alcohol. I believe he's just trying to utilize a level playing field to the other restaurants that have service bars on their own private property, not public property. Just point of conversation.
I think this is right. I mean, you know, and I, and this has, some of this has little to, it all has to do with you, but it's precedent-setting, and I think it was Paulsy or someone. I mean, sometimes I feel like, why have any liquor laws at all sitting here? Because we just keep allowing more and more alcohol everywhere. And I think that, you know, you're in a, I can only think of one location that may have a service bar outside, and I think it's, you're right in the middle of downtown. I think it's really a dangerous precedent, because what, when you're sitting here, what you hear repeatedly is the level playing field argument and the competition. So, this group, this person comes in for, you know, wine and beer, and next thing you know, you've got every, you know, little establishment now needs a wine and beer license, a pizza place, whatever it is, because they need to compete. Then it goes to some other level. Then everybody's got a Dancing and Entertainment License, and then, and that's all we hear, "Well, the level playing field." And, you know, I think that when you came here before, I sort of envisioned, you had talked about the food, I think you had a conversation about the sandwiches and the types of things that you were going to serve. And I sort of, just without a diagram, I sort of envisioned that there would be like a raw bar. I don't know what I thought it would look like, but it wasn't what I saw downtown at one point. It was probably like a table with maybe like a little awning over it or something like that. That's what I sort of envisioned in my mind, and then everything else coming from inside. And, and then we saw like the, you know, your, your version that you'd put out there, which was quite large, and now, fortunately, you moved it in back or on the side. And I mean, think, I understand the dilemma you have, but I think you need to figure out, like, you know, can you go upstairs and serve bar alcohol from there? Can you limit what is served outside so that it's not so much, so taxing on a bartender? Can you limit it, if you want to sit outside, then you limit it to beer and wine, let's say, versus mixed drinks? Maybe, you know, is there some way you could look at it that way? Because as soon as we grant this, I can guarantee you, it's not just going to be maybe, it's going to be, everybody else would be like, "Oh, that'd be really cool if we can have a bar outside, too, for service. We can end the clutter inside," or a lot of these establishments downtown are very small. And that's, that's my concern, is what does it do for setting a precedent that we, we may not want to see those consequences? Because it just makes it more and more dangerous as far as, you know, the alcohol getting in the wrong hands, the people that are not necessarily, you know, just sitting there having a drink and, and eating. Because we, we've talked about it, we've talked about it to you and to everybody else, that you need to be eating while you're sitting there. This is, you know, a drink with your dinner or your lunch. This is not coming and spending the evening just drinking outside.
I understand that.
Tim? With all due respect to my colleagues, I respect all your opinions. I tend to support this license, and the reason why is, A, he's on private property. Two, the bar, by the way, you've been a fantastic sport by moving the bar to the side, so thank you very much for cooperating. I see the bars on the side. I've gone to the establishment many, many times. It's not a crazy place. It's a very classy restaurant. I don't, I don't see it getting on a tro. It's looking, he's looking for a seasonal bar, and the precedent, honestly, has already been set. You have other restaurants in downtown, like Aden's and DeWolf Tavern and Lobster Pot that have outside dining, and so I, I think we have to be fair in our, in our thinking in regards to, you know, when we go ahead. But maybe what we could do is a trial basis. We can, you can come back for a review and, in three months' time, and we could, we could see how it goes now that we've, we're already in the middle of July, so I don't know when you, you would expect to get outside dining up and going if this...
It would take me a month to get all my contractors and everything, three weeks to a month probably, to get it all up and running if, if it were okay.
And Peter, just correct me on one thing. That bar will have no bar stools, right? So, people will not be there.
Correct.
So, you have to sit down, and you have to be served by a waiter or waitress to get alcohol.
No problem.
So...
I wrote that in there, but we don't have to have that at all, so...
Thank you.
Chief Martin, I did ask for your input. I know you were waiting, too, but could you share your thoughts on this?
I did go to the establishment and saw where the bar was, and it's, it's going to be tough to move, but he's going to be able to transport it at the end of the season or whatever, readily movable, as we initially thought. Relative to your decision, all I would ask for is that once it's settled, I would ask for the drawings to be set so we could determine seating capacities and egress paths prior to final approval, to ensure that we're safe in, in both directions, from the back door of the establishment all the way around the front, as we initially did when the bar was located to the west side of the building.
To the chief's point, Mr. Chairman, and just could do it with you, Mr. Sebring, or any applicant in front of us, because we go through this time and time again, and he, you've got a good point about the rendering of the drawings and the specifics and the approvals, if it has to need the HDC approval, and all the approvals need be to come in front of this council, and us have those refurbished items, to have all that clarity and everything in order, almost like a checklist, to say, "Yes, this makes sense. You, you did your homework, everything's in place, there's no more holdups." We hear up, time and time again, "Oh, we're held, we're held up again, we're held up again. We need to expedite things." To that point, this is why we keep repetitiously saying to applicants and business owners, there's a process, and the officers are here to bring you through that process. So, it's my recommendation that we continue this, not to postpone your, I, I just, the chief, I think, needs more time with this because of his recommendation of how we stated tonight. If it's more in-depth of the approvals of what you're going to do, it is your private property. Just on a more comprehensive portrayal of all our concerns as a whole, I think July 29th, is that going to put you behind as you're working on it more and more, or...
I'm not allowed to work on it. I haven't been able to for two weeks. I had to send...
Because of the decision that came down on you?
Yes. I had to send all the contractors over there.
I would suggest, I don't hear any objections, whatever, to serving food outside.
Yeah.
So, I would suggest to, actually, to your point, is that if we can move that part of it along and, and allow you to do what you need to do to get those tables and chairs out there, have diners out there enjoying themselves, and then we can, if, if it's this council's pleasure, I don't know what it is yet, we could review the liquor license again on the 29th, but at least move the, the food portion of it forward so you can get going with that part of it.
Because I, I do agree with Mr. Sebring. I believe he is limited with the compound that he's utilizing on the access point of the waitresses coming from all the way in. That's very confined as a small bar as itself, but my concern when you come back is, to the east side, is it going to be barricaded? So, the only access would be by the service personnel and nothing from the public.
I'd be glad to work with you in any respect like that. If that's what you need to be done, that's what we'll do.
If people need more of a security to that point.
I can put something permanent or non-permanent in there, whatever works for the council.
I do think that the chairman is correct, though. I mean, I hate to see you wait till the 29th for the whole thing, because I actually thought that your tables and chairs, I mean, your restaurant's always busy, I hear great things, I've been dying to go. I said, "Oh, when it's, when you have all the outdoor seating." So, I, I think the summer is getting, you know, it's July, and if you're going to have any of that outside, I think at least, you know, the food and give you an idea of how it's all going to work, I mean, you should move forward with that part of it, and then this particular aspect can either be voted on tonight with whatever our opinions are or could be delayed, but to let you move forward with the rest. I mean, I think everything else is what you, I know you, I think you maybe see it as, you can't do one without the other, but everything else, I think, was pretty much approved at the last council meeting.
Something that also hasn't been said is, it feels like it's you, and it's not. It's, there's a point, there's a tipping point in which then we, the chief's department has X amount of officers. There's only so many people that can do so much, and then if we keep adding to that, we need another officer, which is all the dollars that go along with that. And there's that tipping point that happens. So, it's not you.
Yeah.
It certainly isn't you.
I understand that, too.
So...
And the idea of maybe a trial basis, you know, even a very short trial basis for a couple of weeks or something, see how it works. If you're not happy with anything that's going on, then you can adjust it from there. I just, the summer's getting away from me, and I'm afraid, you know, once I get the okay for the liquor, and I've got to get all my contractors back in a row and get them out there. So, it'll probably take me three weeks from that point, which would be the end of August, almost.
Just, so if we continue...
Just one more point I want to make is, I think this is just suitable for accessibility, because if the waitresses went inside and got the drinks and walked outside to the outdoor patrons, they would be drinking. So, basically, this is just easier, expeditious process for a service to get the alcohol, because they will be drinking outside on his patio.
Right.
So, you're not taking that away, that aspect. All that we're talking about is the accessibility for a service to just have accessibility other than that other bar. So...
Well, I'd like to say I'm not in agreement with a trial basis, because that's tantamount to approval. It's just a foot in the door. I'm in favor of the alternative that I mentioned before, which I discussed with you on my visit 10 days ago. If we had a small service bar to the left of the entrance, you could also have an egress replacing the window directly ahead of you when you, where you enter, so that that would conform with the fire chief's requirements, and you still could serve the liquor through the, directly back door to the waiters and waitresses, the way we discussed. And I, and I'm very much in this issue, thinking not just of the oyster bar, but I'm thinking of the fact that if we okay your request, we're going to have a line at the door of other establishments in Bristol that want to have bars outside of their premises. And I agree with the chief of police that we don't want to take that step.
Did you gentlemen have something that you wanted to add before we took a vote on this?
Um...
Okay. I know Keith had asked if he wanted to say something real quick.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and town councillors, thank you. Point of clarification, and Councilman Sweeney mentioned it, this is not precedent-setting, not at all.
Who said it was?
Well, the word has been used...
Some of us did, yes.
That it is precedent-setting, and that this is the first time it's going to happen. It's not. It is already in existence at DeWolf Tavern. It's already in existence at Aden's. It's already in existence at Quidos. It's already in existence at the Lobster Pot. These four establishments already have outside service bars to serve their clientele. And the only other thing that I would say is, if you've been there, you will see that the bar, the inside bar, is very minimal. If we're, and to allow, Mr. Sebring, to be successful, to serve everything from there with an additional 32 seats is highly impractical. It's just not helpful for his business to be successful.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. Stephen Bridgety, I am your appointed representative hospitality rep to discover Newport and representing our town. It's my role to provide you information with an annual report and periodic reports from time to time, which I will be addressing with you later this evening. This is a quality establishment, and I, I think we're all in agreement on that. It's also a matter of practicality and efficiency that this gentleman has raised, that, yes, you've heard it several times, about the smallness of the inside bar, the ability to move, you know, beverages for people to enjoy with the lunch that he has in mind. He has put the bar out of sight from street side. I'm talking about Main Hope Street. I think he's made, you know, a big concession of sorts there, and really, he's done the right thing with your recommendation. My role is to give you the information, to provide stats, but also to make recommendations. I recommend that you, you grant his request to have this service bar, because it will enable him to start to make ends meet. He's still as young in this establishment and hasn't yet, you know, broken even. He's a success, but it's going to take time, as it, as it is in any restaurant business. This will assist him in the growth of his business and in the growth of our downtown area in terms of the fine dining that we now all enjoy. So, that's my recommendation that you do approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the town council. Steve Katz, 42 River Street. So, you know me, and you know that what I do in my work life is economic development. I do it for the state of Rhode Island. So, I'm going to approach this from an economic development standpoint. And where Peter is right now, he is in an unfair competitive disadvantage, because his competition, and I can name five, four of the restaurants have already been named, there's actually five that I can think of right now, that in fact currently have outside service bars. So, Peter, and as Steve Bridgety just mentioned, is a startup business. He's currently in a competitive disadvantage, and without this ability to serve his clients outside via an outside service bar is going to hurt his business. That's, that's my two cents.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of this council?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to request a modification of the Class BV alcohol beverage license for the oyster bar. Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I would second, and I just, again, what is presented to this council. My concerns, Mr. Sebring, is the accessibility of where the service bar is. That's, there is no access from the east side.
We can put a petition in there, whatever it takes.
And upon the approvals of what you need to make that happen, then I would second with discussion.
We can do a review.
We have a motion and a second for discussion. My two cents is, I would like more conversation with the chief in regards to the alcohol portion of the service bar, but I would be absolutely happy to say yes to the, the food preparation, cold service, and chucking this evening. Is there any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Is there a new motion on the floor?
New motion for what?
When, when we have, well, the second possibility is, we could approve the food now and have discussion again on the 29th.
But I thought that we, we approved the food, in the food, the outdoor beverage, alcohol beverages, all the last council meeting. We, we did all of that. We, we need to do it again?
The only thing that's really before you is the service bar.
Everything else has been approved.
Yeah. Everything else was, was approved, and there was no retraction of that.
What's the holdup? Is it with his district commission?
I was just going to say, speak to Steve's concern, excuse me.
Um, the holdup for me is, um, I don't have the ability to serve the seats outside from what I have inside, and I've known that right along. The last time I came in front of you, I made a mistake, and I didn't make that clear to you. But, um, my kitchen and my bar were set up, basically, for 35 to 40-seat restaurant. With the outside, when I first leased the, the premises, it was with the idea of doing some outside. I thought, being on private property, I guess I was a little naive. I didn't think it would be that big a deal to get the liquor license, which I already had approved for outside also. But really, most of my business plan was contingent on that. It's about a break-even scenario or a little better with 35 seats in the restaurant, as many restaurateurs would admit to, probably 35 is pretty small. And during the summer, if I can get up into the 50 to 60-seat range, then I have the ability to pay down some of my debt. But with just 35 seats, 40 seats, it's, it's an uphill battle.
Well, Peter, with all respect, you know, it's not a responsibility of this council to...
I understand that completely, Paulsy.
...be a businessman of the laws of the town. to inform businessmen of the laws of the town. It's your responsibility as a businessman to find it out. So we can't really, in my view, respond to the fact that you may not have understood things. That's your responsibility.
Isn't it possible?
Secondly, I do believe that it's quite possible for you to find an alternative, that little space to the left, maybe add another door to satisfy the fire chief for egress. You could do that, if you really had resolved to do it. And that's what I would prefer to have happen. And that's the reason, plus the precedent one, and there's been some comments on that, but these other places are probably in violation of us. And the flip side of that is that if we're gonna approve this in a completely free way, we're into a whole new set of precedents for the town of Bristol. So that's why I've already guessed it.
Could I just clarify something for the council?
Please, thank you.
After, I'm conferring with the clerk, the use of the service bar for the oysters and for food, you do not need to vote on that. He can do that. So you can go forward with that tonight. The only thing you have to decide, either tonight or on the 29th, is whether or not alcohol can also be served from the service bar. But in terms of the food, he can do that.
So, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, maybe we should continue this item till the 29th, since I'm feeling there's some, a little bit uncomfortable, and a little bit of people.
Well, we can reconsider it again on the 29th if we also choose, if there's new information shared.
Well, since the vote was in the negative, I make a motion, we continue this item for your service bar. I actually thought that was my original opinion, so I guess I'm full circle. So that's my motion.
So we have a motion to continue it to the 29th to have discussion about it again?
I'll second the motion.
Is there any other discussion?
But I'm just curious about the, you know, you know your business better than we do, but in the sense of, you know, you're talking about lunch and so forth, you know, during the day and throughout the day. I mean, isn't it possible that there are many times during the day, with the exception of peak dinnertime, that you would be able to serve the alcohol from your main bar to the outside?
That bar will service about 40 people. So once I hit that number, whether it's inside, outside, or a combination of the two, then the service for the rest of the folks, if they keep coming, is gonna start going downhill.
But you're assuming that everybody's gonna wanna drink. Not everybody's going to be...
Oh, the soda comes from there, too, and the lemonade and the ice water.
I think they have to look at it as an image. If you go to the Bristol Oyster Bar, the fire chief could probably say that if you were to have the waitresses do the inside, have the waitresses from the outside at that bar with the patrons coming in, waiting for a seat, there's gonna be just too much traffic in that doorway, and it's gonna be a fire hazard.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
I have one question. Is there anything that I can get the chief, any information or anything like that, or if you'd like to come by?
We'll have somebody stop by there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Why do we spend so much time on that? Because we care about all of this, and it's not about this restaurant owner, it's the precedent that we move forward.
Sure.
Lou?
Okay, the next item is item F1. This is the petition of Dell's Lemonade, request council consideration to allow operating a car at a fixed location in Independence Park. You have administrator, Town Administrator and Code Compliance Coordinator's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny this request for the stationary cot.
We have a motion and a second to deny. Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next, you have the petition of National Grid and Verizon for the location of a pole on Heritage Road. You have recommendation of the Town Administrator and Director of Public Works to approve.
I have to recuse myself.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the National Grid and Verizon petition for a joint pole location on Heritage Road based on the recommendation of the Town Administrator and the Director of Public Works.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you. Welcome back.
And you have a petition of Brian and Ferrera for Beatrice Lane. Would like the opportunity to discuss problem Beatrice Lane with the council.
Good evening.
Good evening, Town Council.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Brian Ferrera, for Beatrice Lane.
Thank you.
No problem. I started coming here in, I don't know, 2000, when we were developing the property with my father and my brother. And we've gone through, you know, hoops and bounds to get to the property where it is We had discussion with the town at the time that it should be meeting minutes from then, that we would do a binder coat, and that we would pave up to my street, or up to my house, which is for Beatrice Lane, and then the town would complete the rest. And here we are, you know, 13 years later, and still the binder coat is down, which now it's deteriorating to dirt, pretty much. I have my neighbor here as well, just to, you know, back up, just to let you know that it is a problem, it is a safety hazard. And I don't know, if you've gone down to Beatrice Lane, or have even know where it is, because a lot of people don't, you know, we're really only two houses on the street, so it's a small neighborhood, but it's peaceful. We keep our property clean and orderly. It was in my family for over 60 years. It's named after my grandmother, and Fabilia was named after my grandfather. So I take pride in living there and in Bristol. I just would like the same in return. So if we could pave it or find an agreement to get this rectified, we'd be very willing to help, so.
Mr. Chairman, coming up on the agenda, we are gonna touch base on the road improvement. And I believe myself and Director McBride and Administrator Texera have an upcoming meeting. I know this doesn't make it sound better, but there are other binder roads that are in consideration. Yours isn't the only one.
I understand that.
It's been years. This is why this is a major concern here in the town of Bristol, that, you know, we've been stating about our road program, how we have to make these improvements. So I make a motion right now to just refer this to the DPW director, just for follow-up after we have more discussions, and maybe some follow-up minutes on how we could go forward.
Actually, we can take a moment before we go, and if those of you who haven't met, this is our new DPW director, Kevin McBride, prior DPW director, and back at us again. Welcome back.
Thank you. Can you hear me? I just got this this evening and have not had an opportunity to go up there. I'm familiar with the area, but as Councilman Stewart mentioned, there are numerous roads in town that are in kind of a similar situation, and we do have a collective meeting coming up with the Town Administrator to discuss this for our future plans for the program going forward. So I just ask to be given an opportunity to go and review it on-site, and then have the opportunity to discuss this with the councilman and the Town Administrator going forward.
I can understand that you have other roads that are binders, but I'm sure those roads have been recently bindered. This has been there for 13 years. So it's a big difference in actually, you know, having a binder just set in place than having one that's been there for that long.
I understand that. I haven't had an opportunity to even drive on it within the last couple of weeks since I've been here, so.
It just got kind of fell in the cracks, I think. That's what happened, and...
I'd just like to say, I sort of remember this from years and years ago.
Yeah, I think you're the only one that's still in the council from then.
I think part of the investigation should be not only on the merits of the request, but on the true background of the circumstances that lead us to this step.
Yeah, I think there was an ordinance at the time. But again, I'm just speaking from memory, and I don't have clarification. To allow these roads to only have the binder surface put down, and then at some point in the future, the town would take it upon themselves to put the final surface course in. I don't know where that ordinance stands today. I understand that that's no longer in existence, but there are roads, as this gentleman had mentioned, that still exist with just the binder course on it. And if it's been in existence for a period of time, I would say, or I would submit, that probably the condition of that binder course alone is probably approaching failure. But I have not looked at this particular...
So we need to definitely give you time to investigate it and also give us a recommendation on your judgment.
What I'd like to say is, and I certainly have no problem with Kevin, because you just started here, and you just got started, and it was 4th of July, so I don't think you'd have much time for anything else. But I don't know, and Tony's not here to get some background, but maybe Diane, I don't know if you have some light to shed on this. I was not on the council, but I guess the question is, was it discussed that it would be done, or was it agreed upon? Because I think it was agreed upon, with the council was going to do that, then it should not have taken all these years to get that done. And that's what concerns me about this, and that's what I would like someone to shed some light on. So either Diane, if you can do it today, or Kevin, when you come back with your report at the next meeting, if you could look into that part of it as well, because it shouldn't just have gone by the wayside if they did their share, and the town never stepped up and did theirs. So I think we need to see what the actual agreement, was it an actual agreement, gentlemen, or was it just...
As far as I know, it was.
I did research, I researched it today. There was a zone change back in 1994 for this whole neighborhood.
Yeah, exactly.
And there were a list of conditions that were put on the Zone Map Amendment, and the owner was responsible for some of the improvements, and then the town was responsible for the rest. So I do have a copy of that, and I can give that to you and to Kevin, so you can include it in your report.
So it's looking like we are responsible?
According to the conditions of the zone change, yes.
So, and if that is the case, then it would have to get expedited on the list, I think.
But if that's not the only road, then those others that are involved in a similar situation should be included in discussion looking forward for pavement management program for the future.
Right.
So we have a motion to refer this to the DPW director, and I interrupted Tim. I believe he was gonna second that.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, and discussion portion is, that was your motion?
You just have to respect us of his recommendation and also documentation. That has to be refurbished to us to come to a conclusion.
It's in front of this council now. We've, you've brought this issue to us, referring it to the DPW director, to give him an opportunity to see what he finds out and comes back to us. Our next meeting is on the 29th. Do you believe that that would be enough time to give us some information on this?
I believe so. I believe we'll have had an opportunity to sit down with Councilman Stewart and the Town Administrator to discuss not only this road, but others.
Their meeting's on the 28th, so it's apropos at the 29th.
No question.
Yeah, absolutely nothing whatsoever. So why don't we, we have a motion to refer it to the DPW director, and I suppose that same motion should also then continue this discussion to the 29th.
I amend it to that fact.
29th. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
I do, did I say the 29th or the 28th?
The 29th.
My meeting's on the 28th.
Our next meeting is on the 29th.
Okay.
So, thank you both. Did you want to say, share something? I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Wayne Mallett. I live at Two Beatrice, right next to Brian.
Welcome.
I've lived there for 10 years now. When I purchased the home, I was told that the road would be complete, because obviously it was a binder coat when I purchased the home. I now have a seven and five-year-old daughter. Brian has a six-year-old son. Kids ride their bikes in the streets. My kid's knees all scraped up from falling in the street. The road is beyond patching. It's down to the dirt. Before we came here, we were kicking our feet in the dirt, in the holes. It's not, it's becoming a safety issue, because my kids are getting hurt. So it's, you know, we're, you pay your taxes, you know, you do the right stuff, and the road is just, people come to my house and they say, "What's going on with your road?" I mean, it's embarrassing. It really, it's embarrassing.
Unfortunately, I don't think there's one council member that's gonna disagree with you on that.
No, but this is, you know, this has been 10 years, so I've made numerous calls to DPW, to Town Administrator. The Town Administrator said, "I'm gonna come down, do a ride, I'm gonna put an order in with the DPW to get patches put in." That was two months ago. There's no patches on my road. My kids can't ride their bikes in the road. I don't know where the patches are. He said they were going to be done. That's your Town Administrator.
Excuse, what I would ask, first off, is certainly give us an opportunity...
I have.
To do, well, no, give this council the opportunity to see what we get back from the DPW director, and then at that point in time, let's see where we go. So give us those three weeks. I mean, we can't do anything tonight, certainly, and I know you're not asking this to.
I understand that.
So, but give us an opportunity to see if we can straighten this out. Unfortunately, you're not the only one, and you're not the only one with a binder, and you're not the only one with a binder that's over 15 years old. That doesn't make your situation any better, though, and I'm not suggesting that it does. So give us an opportunity to make it better.
Okay.
We're back here on the 29th, and we'll discuss it again and see if we can move forward with this, if that's okay with you.
I think I share Councilwoman Porella's frustration. She brought up a good point. You're saying 10 years, and you made phone calls, and I would imagine that you would have been in front of this council a long time ago if the phone calls just didn't, if there's special conditions that had to be met by councils years ago. I would just imagine you would have been here before now, you know, with this situation, so.
Your frustrations have been heard. We'll stay tuned, come back on the 29th. We'll have more information for you.
Okay, I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to express it's more than just a binder coat. I mean, even down to the road width, it goes from 17 feet down to 12 feet. There's a lot of issues with the road, and it's more than just a, you know, putting down some more asphalt. There's a lot of things going on. There's growth that comes over that scratches the cars. I mean, there's a lot going on down there.
Suggestion to you, is now that we're talking about this, I'm sorry, now that we're talking about this right now, and we've been talking about it for a while, reach out, and it looks like Kevin was gonna suggest that, reach out to our DPW director and share those concerns. We know those up front. Reiterate those concerns if you've already shared them.
Okay.
Will you be able to set up a time to meet these gentlemen down in there and take a look?
Yeah, what I'd like to do is get an opportunity to look at it myself and do a self-assessment. Then we also have a consultant on board now, whether or not that road was part of the assessment that they did, whether they've done an assessment. My concerns are that, you know, the age of the binder course only being in place, you probably have subbase failure as well. I don't know, but from the discussion, and if you have minimum width problems, this is probably a greater undertaking than meets the eye than just running a surface course through the road to fix it. So my point is, you know, I think that this will be a bigger project than anybody anticipates, just from what I'm hearing.
Correct.
And knowing the age of the pavement that's been down. And I just submit that without even having looked at it.
But this is an area of expertise. Am I correct? You're an engineer who specializes in civil? I mean, I'm not sure...
That's correct.
You know, civil engineering, so, I mean, I think Kevin will be able to give us a very good assessment of the situation on your own.
So what I, I guess what I would ask is that I'd be given an opportunity to take a look at it, and then what we can do is certainly set up a meeting on-site. You know, we can discuss some of those things, and then obviously, if we can, we have a meeting on the 28th, and then the following night is the meeting, council hearing, and we can further discuss our findings.
Thank you for your time.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is your public service appointment section. You have the planning board auxiliary members with terms to expire in, oh, July of 2013? I don't think so. That must be 16. Okay, we have the application of Stephen P. Katz, 42 River Street, and Michael Rossi, both seeking reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reappoint Steve Katz and Michael Rossi to the planning board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you. Thank you for what you do, too.
The next item is personnel board, and this is to fill an unexpired term to expire in December 2016. You have the application of Renee Bellotti to Stephen Drive, who seeks appointment.
Make a motion to set up an interview with Renee Bellotti for the personnel board.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next is the Christmas Festival Committee. You have the application of Sarah Harrison, 663 Medicom Avenue, seeking council consideration for appointment.
Make a motion to submit Sarah Harrison to the Chairman of the Christmas Festival Committee for consideration of their committee.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, the Zoning Board of Review, alternate member to fill an unexpired term to expire in March 2017. You have the application of Charles Burke of 26 Summer Street, who asks for consideration.
Make a motion to set up an interview with Charles A. Burke for the Zoning Board of Review.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I always say this at the end of this, if you're interested in being part of, well, HDC, I think we spoke earlier, or any of our boards or commissions, you're not sure what to do, reach out to us, and we'll share some information. You don't have to know everything. Just have a good thought process and willing to do good for the town. Thank you.
The next item is Item H2. This is continued from June 10th, excuse me. The petition of Ethan Tucker on behalf of the Trident Race in conjunction with Bristol Parks and Recreation to request to serve alcohol at the Town Beach on July 25th.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. How are we doing this evening? I'd like to give you guys some shirts, if that's okay.
Sure.
But it's gonna come with a condition.
Uh, no, thank you.
A little bit.
Is this under $25?
Looks like they're under $25 to me, councilman.
All right.
Thank you.
They're good-looking t-shirts.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor.
Not bad, right? They're very soft.
We like the t-shirts. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like to take a little bit of an opportunity, not too much time, just to kinda tell you about the race a little bit and answer any questions. We've had some discussions already regarding the decision. It's unfortunate, but I'm here to make you feel bad about it nonetheless, if I can, for a few minutes. So the Trident Race has been in the making for about a year and a half, and it's an obstacle course race through Cold State Park. We've got a committee of about 40, a volunteer list of about 100, some ancillary volunteers, like the United States Army. One of our sergeants is here this evening with us, and then there's some of the committee members you can see behind us there. So what is an obstacle course race? Well, I'm sure that you've seen some commercials and kind of teasers about what it could be or what it might be, or, you know, I'm here to tell you that you really kinda have to experience it to really fully understand it. There's a lot of components. There's a lot of running. There's a lot of physical challenges. But when you get right down to it, it's about the experience and the experience you have with other human beings. People don't do it to spend hours in the gym flipping tires or jumping over walls and climbing ropes to be better rope climbers or to be better tire flippers. They're doing it to be better humans and better, and overall. It's a physical challenge. And the camaraderie and the overall sense of achievement that is impressed upon you after completing such a feat is overwhelming. The first time I did an obstacle course race was a few years back, and I was just trying to get through it. And it was a short race, much similar to this. It was about four miles throughout Cold State Park. I didn't really sink in until I started doing more of them. And when you're running up and down a mountain with your friends, and you look over and you see a veteran, maybe that's lost a couple of appendages, being towed by his fellow veterans up a mountain, and you fully understand how impactful and how inspirational it can be. It really starts to sink in when you see someone with a prosthesis, jumping off of a plank 50 feet into a makeshift pond to get over maybe a fear of heights for swimming. It moves you. It really, really does. And that's why, to get back to my previous statement, you really have to experience it for yourself. This is the number-one growing sport in the world. More people are registering for obstacle course races than marathons and half-marathons combined. So the course is about four miles, goes throughout Cold State Park, with the epicenter being on the Town Beach. I have previously sent you guys a site plan, some examples of obstacles and different things like that. I think I gave you also a breakdown and list of our volunteers, committee members, and all pertinent information. The event is being produced by my company, The Reckon Group. I'm also the founder. My co-founder, Mark Reinhardt, who's out back there, I believe, is also a very proud new business owner in Bristol. Nine months in, I believe. Nine months in, Anchor Health and Performance on Gooding Avenue. If you are looking to really join a family and get a different type of gym experience, it's a place to be. It's remarkable, and he's done a great job. He's already expanding after nine months.
Congratulations.
I think I covered most things. So obstacles, we'll have some classic obstacles like wall jumps, rope climbs, tire flips, adult slip and slide, some fun things mixed in there. It's gonna be a really great day. We have it catered with a lobster and steak clam boil. Our own General Treasurer, Seth Magazin, is gonna be running it with me in one of the heats. We'll have some other dignitaries there, like our governor, giving out awards, and the United States Army will be out in full force, not only supporting, but also lending personnel on the obstacles to help with motivation. You'll find that a lot of participants, they get into this and maybe they've done a million of them. Maybe they're addicted like I am. Maybe they're struggling with something. Maybe they're struggling with some weight loss, or they're struggling with a personal issue in their life. And this type of vehicle, this type of event, is a phenomenal way to deal with a lot of those different struggles. We have over 700 registrants at this point, and we expect to sell out about 1,000, with a total participant count of around 2,000 people. We expect it to grow every year. We have, my gosh, families from all over New England and as far away as Canada that are coming down for the weekend for this event. I can, every day, I get an email, "Where's a great place to stay?" "Hey, do you recommend someplace to eat?" I'm bringing my entire family. "Our kids are doing the kids' race." "My husband and I are doing the adult race. Where do you recommend to stay?" I got an amazing letter from a nice couple in New Hampshire recently. I wish I could recall their name, but Connecticut, New York, New Hampshire, Maine, and Vermont, and obviously Rhode Island. We've got a lot of local gyms participating and a lot of local sponsors.
Sounds like it's excellent for economic development.
It really is, and we're trying to encourage, working with a few of the local businesses, to encourage not only for a lot of the participants to stick around, but also to kind of funnel them in downtown, getting them maybe to spend a few more bucks down, some of the downtown businesses. It's really interesting. It's quite the phenomenon. You have to really kind of experience it for yourself. Part of the reason why I gave you guys a t-shirt, I'm hoping that you'll come. Maybe I can get a couple of you to run it. All fitness levels. You would be enormously surprised if you took the chance and actually participated and got out there with all of us. I can promise you that. Absolutely.
First, Mr. Tucker, thank you and your organization for bringing this to Bristol and Bristol Town Beach, and obviously your first plans submitted to this council. And what you're representing tonight is every aspect of those plans except the alcohol use. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I.
There's still time for you to change your mind, if you like.
I'm just, what's presented to us, I'm just trying to do a commercial for your event on July 25th down at the Town Beach, and I think you have everything in order. It's very organized, and I do think that it'll expand. And we just thank you as a town, and if everything's in order with our Parks and Recreation and our police department and public safety departments, I think it'll be a huge success, and I just wish it very well.
Thank you.
Well put.
Yeah.
Well, we have a recommendation to deny the alcohol.
Yes.
And I'm in favor of denying it. This is a beach with 650 youth over there every day, and it's not appropriate to serve alcohol on any event, regardless of how good the event is.
Ethan, I'm sure it's going to be a very, very successful event, you know. I understand celebratory drinks are involved with this. There's so many, many establishments we have in town, you know, make it part of the bike path. You guys all jog down to Agave or Aden's or something like that, and, you know, have a drink in one of these beautiful establishments we have in downtown. But, you know, unfortunately, we don't condone drinking on the state park.
Right. I don't wanna spend too much time on that.
Okay.
Personally, I'm sure you know I'm disappointed considering recent events and other decisions that were made recently. But we won't spend too much time on that. I would like to mention and add, though, that it is a celebration. This is quite something, when you've gone through somewhat of a battle like this with your friends, family, loved ones, and to have a celebratory toast at the end, it's most appropriate, and it's kinda par for the course, just like many of the other festivals that are on town property throughout the year. Some on, with, by playgrounds, some associated with the church. It's a celebration. These are athletes. These are people that are here to better themselves. These are people that are here that are gonna run through this park with a 50-pound sandbag on their back with their friends, and then afterwards would like a celebratory toast. They're athletes. They're not looking for a party. And I would just like to emphasize that that's the type of sport, and this is the type of family event that this is. Not a rave or a beach party. We don't have to spend a whole lot of time on it, but I'd just like to emphasize that.
Can I just make one point about that, though?
Sure.
You made that point at the last, the last time you discussed this, that it was a celebratory toast, and you made it, I think we talked about it.
I don't think we discussed it.
Yeah, we did. It was a, you know, we talked about it, but then in the documentation or in something else you said, you wanted alcohol from 10:00 in the morning till the end of the day. I mean, that is not a celebratory toast. I don't support this, and I told you that before, but I just, I think you have to be clear, because some of the stuff that I've seen online is very clear about what you've just said. You know, if you look at like the Boston one, I was looking at that one yesterday. And then other things emphasize some of the alcohol aspect of it. And I just don't think that our Town Beach, which is an economic development location in and of itself, and it's great to have more people coming, that we need to have alcohol with, whether it's a weekday when we have the camp or whether it's a weekend where we have hundreds and hundreds or thousands of people who come to our beach and are there to, with their families and spend the day, that we need to have something going on with alcohol right there at the beach. I don't think it's appropriate. I mean, I think we discussed this last time. I think some of us may have mentioned to you, like, if you're gonna do something, then maybe you could get approval to use inside a Quinta Gamlin for drinks. But I don't think that on the beach is like the right place for it.
I believe Mr. Tucker revised this plan in accordance after the first initial plan with target benchmarks to accommodate all liabilities with that. The only reason why I asked him this evening, are you in front of us just to tell us about the event, is because I haven't heard you submit any more requests regarding the alcohol. So that's why I just wanted to give a commercial, and maybe you can actually give a website while you're on this meeting, and also maybe, you know, if the lobster bake afterwards, maybe people can just attend that by all means, you know?
Yeah, I appreciate that. You know, I'm not here to beat a dead horse. I have more important things to work out. The event is two and a half weeks away, so I'm a strategist. I have contingencies for my contingencies. So we're gonna be successful. This is, you know, as I said, disappointing. But we'll move on and press forward. I just wanted to make a few clear points, especially regarding the atmosphere of the entire topic. It's gonna be quite a remarkable event, and one of the things that we've been working on for the past few years with the Economic Development Commission is bringing more events in the summertime other than the 4th of July. And I think this could be a great economic little engine towards the end of July. And I encourage everyone to stop in, have lobster and steak that will be catered, and participate and watch. It's gonna be quite a spectacle just to watch. I can promise you that. The website is thetridentrace.com, if anyone else would like to check it out.
Mr. Chairman, in response to the request that we permit the serving of alcohol, I would move that we deny that based upon recommendations of common sense. To deny the serving of alcohol at the Town Beach on July 25th.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? My two cents is I think it's gonna be a successful event, and it looks like you've got wonderful support already, and it's two and a half weeks away, so.
A guy's only as good as his team. These individuals are amazing. They're family, and I couldn't do without them. And we do have a lot of support, and it's gonna be a pretty amazing event.
Ethan, as you're talking about this, what time, if people wanted to see this race, what time would they go down there? Any time, all through the day?
So the first wave, so how this, how a race like this is structured, heats will go off at different times, typically anywhere from 15 to 30 minutes. So the first wave time of 150 people will go off right at 8:00 AM. That's considered the elite wave. So that will be your, many athletes that are more competitive and that will all, followed by every half an hour consecutive wave times till 1:00 o'clock. So really, any time, any time is prior to 1:30. The best athletes will probably finish the four-mile course in 40 minutes. Many average probably an hour. I'll probably do it an hour and a half. Just kidding.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, to Councilman Harrisoff's motion, was it the same petition tonight that you were in front of us? Or did you withdraw the alcohol request? I just wanna know what type of motion the council made.
The motion was.
Versus my questioning of the applicant.
The motion in front of us this evening was for, to serve alcohol, for looking for a one-day alcohol.
Well, to be clear, at the previous meeting, I didn't speak. It was just deferred to this meeting, so yes. But knowing the outcome and having a prior previous discussion, it was just more of a talking point for the podium.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, we have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm abstaining, Mr. Chairman. And due to the light of what's in front of this council and what was in front of us on June 12th, I think there has to be clarification of policy setting in the town of Bristol with my colleagues, and that's why at this time I'm abstaining with the testimony on the record.
All right, so we have one abstention.
So who's gonna run? Paul's gonna run?
Tim.
Well, I'm very interested in what you're doing in the event, but I'm not interested in having alcohol sit there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan.
Tim will be our representative.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, we have the Item H3. This is from the Town Administrator regarding the Second Annual Bristol Harbor Festival, was continued from June 10th, and you have recommendation, the Town Administrator and Chief of Police.
It's a tough one right here.
Evening. Welcome.
Good evening.
Lou Fratelli.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you again. Here with the same discussion on the beer and wine for the Harbor Festival.
I remember from our last meeting that we reached out to the chief and asked for some clarity from your department about what was appropriate, how to handle this, the potential one-day alcohol license for downtown here. Could you speak to?
Yes. Do you have a report in front of you?
Yes.
Chief, we have a report from Deputy Chief Contenti, but we do not have recommendations of yourself or the Town Administrator.
Okay. I had forwarded it to the Town Administrator. I believe the top one, I have it in front of me.
Isn't that H3A?
Yeah, 3A. There's the list of the.
Did you not get one?
Rules.
Oh, hold on.
And you have notes on it.
So yeah, we got, it says that he agrees with the recommendation.
Looks like you concur, Chief.
Thank you.
Contenti's rec-
Right.
The conditions.
Absolutely. It says I concur with it and it outlines each and every condition with regards to the, the alcohol portion of it.
There was a, we had discussion today that also included, as we do with any event like this, that we need a rider purchased by the event and that rider is to protect the, the town from any issues that may happen with the service of alcohol for that day. And I know that there was some homework I'd reached out to. Julie, were you able to, to get a little bit more information in regards to that or Mike did? Okay.
I, I was. I spoke with representatives from the interlocal trusts that insure the town and they pointed out a couple of things. Number one, that absolutely whenever alcohol is served on town property, that a rider naming the town is an additional insured needs to be purchased and those one-day riders are available and the interlocal trust can help someone in terms of obtaining them. You just have to contact them. They can also go through their own insurance company because apparently these are pretty normal type things that an individual can get. It was also highly suggested and recommended that if it is a town-sponsored activity or a town department that is involved, that a third-party caterer be hired to serve the alcohol, that an official from the town not be, even though they're tip-certified, et cetera, it not be a town employee or a town official serving the alcohol. That brings another whole layer of indemnity when you have a third-party caterer do the service of the alcohol.
And that is a condition in the chief's description.
Yep.
Right. It spells right out.
Harbor Masili agree to.
So, so the trust is being very consistent with the chief's recommendation. So it's good to know that there are best practices out there on this issue.
I don't know. Does the chief say a third-party caterer or that just a tip-certified person?
That was all outlined to the harbor master when he had discussion with, with the deputy.
So if there was approval on this, we would definitely need a, a third-party caterer serving the alcohol.
I think that's not on.
We're going to have a licensed bartender.
Yeah, but I think what Mike is saying is that.
You just can't have a town employee serving alcohol be involved in it. Do you agree with that, Mike? I mean, that the, a third-party bartender would be unacceptable?
As long as that third-party bartender comes with his or her own insurance policy and also has the ability, you know, you have to have a caterer's license in order to do this. And just because you happen to be a tip-certified.
Yeah, I was just going to ask about that.
It doesn't necessarily mean you have the Class P caterer's license that gives you the ability to serve the alcohol. So I think we do have to be clear on that.
So that language should be added into the.
It would have to be added.
Yeah. I, I would say if you're going to approve it, that based on the information I received from the trust to protect your interests as a town, that a condition would have to be, that it would have to be a third-party caterer who has the appropriate license in place to serve alcohol.
And also the additional rider. You had this event last year and I thought it, I mean, I went to it. I thought it was very successful and I don't believe there was any alcohol there. I mean, is, is the alcohol because, I mean, I don't know. It seems like everybody can't do anything, like no one can eat anything without having alcohol at it. I mean, it's like.
I'm not raising your hands. I'm sorry.
Is it because there's a, because you're afraid you won't get enough people? Because you had pretty good crowd last year and that was only the first year. Or, I mean, is it going to be worth all of this to get a third-party caterer to just serve wine and beer and all this? I mean, it doesn't seem like, and you're only giving blocks of time of, because you're doing the two seedings of like two hours. So it doesn't seem worth it to me. I don't know.
It's to add something extra. Just we've added other things every year. This is, this is going to get bigger and bigger every year. That's why we have two seedings. We're expecting more boats, so.
But you're expecting them, even if you didn't, I mean, are you suggesting that if you didn't have the beer and wine, that they wouldn't come?
No, not at all. It's something that, just like anything else, it's, it's to add something else.
To complement the meal.
To complement the meal, the stuffies contest. That, that's what it's for.
I think it's a great event and I thank the committee who did it last year and the committee that expanded this year. As I stated to the harbor master last meeting, it's nothing personal because I'm in support of this. But my concern, and I am just going to be repetitious as the solicitor stated on my conversations with the trust also, is yourself and the residents have to understand something. When it comes to alcohol on town property, I just would like to convey that we're excluded from our policy. So that's why as myself and my colleagues have to ask you or anyone, because this is a door opener because conversations of the gentleman before you arose and this is just, and that's why I have this concern of protecting the town and its residents, not on just all the perimeters that, you know, the chief is recommending, recommending, but just the liability aspects to support an event, do it right. And at the end of the day, the town and the town of Bristol and everyone involved is protected. So to the solicitor's point, there's a tulip rider in conjunction with other towns that go through this. And if we can put that into policy, as I explained to my colleagues, is we have our homework to do because we have to sit as a council going forward. Because I'm sure this isn't going to be the first event, just as we stated, there's a couple other events that we have to really look at and come up with a policy that really, you know, straightens out our liability issue going forward because that's our responsibility. So as I said to the harbor master and everyone here, you know, I'll be there to support the event, eat clams. And would I like a beverage with my clambo? Yes. But sitting here, I am a counselor and I have to look at the town and its liability. And that's, I just want to make it clear of when I do my votes, it's not that I'm against an event. I'm just trying to put the liability issue to be covered.
I'll give you a water as your beverage.
Point of clarity, exclusion, as Counselor Stewart mentioned, he means that if we serve alcohol as the town and we are excluded from our own policy, anything happens, we're, the town is on the hook, there is no insurance. That's why we need that rider. That's why you need to get the rider. That's why all these parameters have to be met. So, and I, I think it's worth reiterating that, that Counselor Stewart speaks for all of us, that we say, it would seem like we're against alcohol and two months ago we were for it. Not that at all. Is that we knew this was going to happen and we knew there'd be more requests for it and it's important that we have a clear policy moving forward that this is what you need, what you don't need. If you don't hit these parameters, then you can't get it. So, but in this instance, I know that we've got some, some, we have the recommendation of the police chief and his department. We have the recommendation from the fire chief. Is there any other recommendations that we were missing on this? It sounds like we've got all of those.
Well, and also we should include the language the solicitors put in about the acceptability of the hired bartender.
Do you think it's going to be feasible? I mean, because we didn't get any rates on what a tulip rider would be for this event. So as Counselor Perilla stated, you know, what's great about our communities, I'm sure a lot is from voluntarism, whether it be the music, the food and everyone setting up. So the costs associated with it obviously comes from the burning of your own town saying you need a detail, you need insurance and whatnot. But with that cost associated, do you think, do you need time to, July 29th to put that in order or would you like it just subject to the conditions and then once those are met, then you could proceed with the alcohol?
I would think that they might decide if this was approved that they, it's not going to be worth the money. I mean, you'd have to sign, you'd have to probably charge $5 for a beer just to pay for all of the third-party, you know, what the third-party caterer is going to want, the alcohol service, the detail, et cetera. But, I mean, I think one of the problems I have with this, and the last time we discussed it, I was in, in favor of this as long as there was some strict guidelines. I'm not sure, you know, given all that's transpired in the last couple of months that, I'm going to vote yes or no on this right now. I'm not sure. But I think it's a little different than the situation that was just before us that was going to have sort of this beer tent sitting there at the beach on a reg-, you know, most of the day. But I think we were put in a bad situation a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
In regards to alcohol in a public park. I, I had another event to go to that evening, a family event. I did stop there afterwards. I personally didn't think the alcohol made a broke, added anything to that event personally, but I don't think that any of us were happy about what transpired in that. I mean, it's different, your situation, I think you know that. But, I mean, we've had a meeting for two hours tonight and almost, I would say 80% of our agenda has been on alcohol. And it's, it's just, in my opinion, it's getting a little out of control, the, the requests that come in. I think, and this again is not, as we said to Pete earlier, this is not directed at you so much. It's just the whole feeling of what's transpiring in front of us on a regular basis. I think this is a great event and I'm very happy, Chief, that you, thank you very much that you, you know, that Deputy Chief put this together and laid that out and that Mike added these two additional requirements that we would need in, in order to make sure that we're protected in terms of the, the liability. This is a far more controlled event. It's going to be here. You're going to have X number of tables under a tent. You know what I mean? It's like, it's pretty, it's pretty manageable in that respect. But it's just, it's just this constant alcohol, alcohol, alcohol. It's what we deal with almost every meeting lately. And I just think there's, it's going to be something wrong if that's what people think is our big economic development policy is to just keep serving alcohol and we're going to get more and more people in. I mean, I just, it's really getting a little frustrating to be perfectly honest with you. So it's not, you personally, and I'm going to buy a ticket, I'm going to be there. Whether you have the alcohol, you don't.
I understand.
And I'm going to bring my water just because when people have alcohol, they never have water at the event, so.
Mike, I just had two questions. What are the two extra conditions? So would you, just so I'm clear?
Third-party caterer.
Sure. Third-party caterer with a catering license to serve alcohol and a rider that would ensure the town's interest.
Okay.
I just wanted to add one more time that even though, for the public to know that there was a moratorium voted on, on June 12th, your application and Mr. Tucker's application was prior to that. So we're, we're hearing these. It's only fair of the existing. I think the bigger focus for this council is, as I stated, is a new policy going forward as a town as a whole. Because I don't think it's going to stop here. Because, and, and it won't. This council has to come up with a new policy. There's been talks with the trust to sit down with them. We as a whole, as a town are with, pooled with other municipalities. So there's things to consider such as, are they going to want to keep us on in comparison to other towns? Do they do it? How does it increase our rates? There's variables that I know a lot of you out there don't know, but we have to take into consideration just on one topic. But as alcohol on public property going forward, with the moratorium, this council, I suggest that we move and meet with the trust, with our solicitor administration. Because as a town going forward, the fabric of our community, of our children around alcohol on public property, I, I just firmly believe that it starts here. It might go into 4th of July events. Other entities and fundraisers which I support will come in and we just need a solidified policy. So we're not, as Mary said, here for two hours. Once the perimeters are met, as we did the research, I can be supportive of all those perimeters being met. When they're not met, I have a problem with that when the town's liable. So.
What's the pleasure of this council?
I would move that we approve the petition with the inclusion of all the requirements recommended by the police chief and all the stipulations added to that by the solicitor.
And I'll second the motion.
Is there other discussion?
Just as long as everything's in place with the solicitor's recommendations, part of this motion. Because other than the other criterias, the detail and everything formulated, I think you believe, you have met all the criterias that would be a good event. And so.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm going to, going to abstain. I feel a little hypocritical going forward on this and having voted against others this evening. And I do think that we just want to make very clear. I think this is a good start with what has been laid out by the police department. Because I do have some concerns about other activities coming forward. Not so much this, but as a result of the other event that was on town property, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lou.
Okay. The, the next item is item H4 from the Direct Community Development regarding the tax stabilization applicant Michael Camello, Volo Boulevard, continued from April 29th. Is supplemental documents provided?
Diane, hello.
Thank you. I think I saw him.
He is. I didn't see Michael.
So this application was submitted probably two months ago, I think, two or three months ago. And it was tabled because we were waiting for the new ordinance to be adopted, which it was tonight. This application is before you for a tax stabilization. I believe the total cost of improvements is $600,000 or thereabouts. And I did speak to the tax assessor today because the new ordinance would allow you to, well, as you've amended it, I guess, you don't have to, I retract that.
Isn't that wonderful?
It's, yeah. So I think it'll be a 10-year stabilization based on the, correct?
Yes.
Based on the ordinance as you amended.
Or we can take advantage of 10 years if we so choose, I guess, is the way it was written.
Correct. Right. So if you have any other questions, I, you know, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I would recommend you.
Just be, just be happy to have this applicant go forward. I know he's been patiently waiting to move to Bristol, so, and it's been longly discussed amongst the tax stabilization revision, so.
He lives in Bristol. He just has a business in Warren, right? So this is wonderful and this is apropos to be able to take advantage of it so quickly. So, so what's the pleasure of this council?
Well, just to clarify.
Move we grant the tax stabilization?
What is your recommendation?
Is it move we, is that move we grant the stabilization for 10 years?
For the 10 years, yes.
He's 10 years.
My recommendation is that you approve it. Is that what you're asking? I'm sorry. Yes, I recommend you approve.
And under what length of time?
10 years.
Which was also the recommendation of our, our tax assessor.
Correct.
Follows the new tax stabilization.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mike.
The next item is item I1. This is the resolution authorizing the assessment evaluations in levy of taxes, sewer service fees and sewer assessments.
Suppose that this be approved and as a standard resolution needed this time of year.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is item I2. This is correspondence from David, David Urban, the president, and Stephen Roth, the treasurer of the Kickamira River Council regarding a possible donation to the harbor department.
I think this is a, a great community effort. Julie, with this being a grant donation, are we all set?
Didn't actually have a chance to see the backup on it, so I'm not sure what's being donated. If you could.
It's a, a grant for the Rhode Island Rivers from, excuse me, the Rhode Island Rivers Council and the Rhode Island Water Resource Board and purchasing 400-foot of oil-absorbent boones to be stored by the harbor master to use in an emergency.
Wonderful.
I think it's great.
So we'll speak with the, yeah.
Just to.
I'll speak with the harbor master about the value and we'll, we'll make sure.
And just to add to it, the assets and whatnot, that way you're aware?
Thank you.
This is, this is very, very, very excellent.
Very generous. Nice.
It is.
Thank them. Thank Doc.
Very bad picture, but you get the gist behind there.
Counsel very, very much for this.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a, looks like a big bag of cotton. So, but it'll save all of us and our, our water creatures. So, I can't? Okay. So what's the motion here? Is it receiving file, Lou? Or to accept?
Can we accept with thanks and send a letter?
I think it'd probably be a good idea to accept it with thanks.
I love it.
With thanks, yeah.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Yes.
So moved.
Mary, I love that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks again, everyone.
The, the next item is from the superintendent of Schools, Bristol Warren Regional School District, requests council consideration to use cult fund for drainage issues relating to the turf installation.
I attended this last meeting. Our vice chairman, Paul Silva, is here. I attended this meeting of the Bristol.
I attended this meeting of the Bristol Warren Regional School District. It was brought to the attention of the school district by their people that it was appropriate to include a better drainage system for this, and what this will do is extend the life of this turf. It'll also actually benefit the neighborhood too by better drainage, so.
I concur with the chairman on this expenditure. This protects the investment that we're making, and I support the $4,100 expenditure.
That's a motion.
I too support it, but I'd like to make the remark that this has been quite an experience that we've gone from grass to asphalt back to turf. Is this going to be the final change there, or are we going to keep giving changes every few years?
You know, if you're familiar with the, with the site, you know, we really tried to grow grass there. We've made a few attempts to grow grass, and with the use of the area and the number of students that are on it and the public that uses it on the weekend and in the summer, the grass really has no life. It tends to turn to dirt very quickly. Our hope is that this turf would be the solution and would provide a safe play area for the children while they're in school and for the surrounding community when school's not in session.
Certainly, the asphalt of a few years ago was a bad idea. Grass doesn't work, and I hope that this will succeed.
It's our hope that it will too as well, Holsey.
So, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Well, you made the motion.
Oh, I made the motion.
I'd ask that you don't second your own motion.
I need a drink.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
There's another two hours. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We look forward to seeing this completed.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
He's also here for the Gitteris, I think.
The next item from the Community Development Director regarding an outline for the performance review of the Economic Development Coordinator.
Hi, Diane. Yes, it's back to you again. I know, this was a particular pinch point for me. I know that all of us have looked for some information in regards to, I know that I have and I know that my colleagues have, of yearly reviews in general for our employees, and the purpose is to show our employees what a great job that they're doing, where areas of improvement need to happen, because the town is truly just a service industry. So, it's about these people and this new position. I think this is a watershed, this is a point that we can look back on and say, this is a great way that we can make sure that people are doing what they're supposed to do, and if they're not, help them achieve that success. And if we give them all the tools and they're non-successful, then we make a change. So, in this particular instance, this is also a lot of work with our new economic development position. It's you, right?
Well, we had the workshop, and then at the workshop you asked me to forward you the recommended job description, which I had done, I think, through the clerk earlier, and then this was a follow-up on that conversation about the performance evaluation.
Now, when are you going to advertise for that position?
We are ready to go if it moves forward tonight, we're ready to go next week.
Fantastic, great.
Diane, a couple of questions. First of all, who's going to make this evaluation, you or the town administrator?
I will make the evaluation and present it to the town administrator, and then he will follow up, if there needs to be follow up.
Well, this is a process, some of that in some companies, and I'm not opposed to it, but wouldn't it be better, instead of singling out this one operation for evaluation, to develop a town-wide policy for evaluations? I mean, why just this one?
Well, I believe the town administrator is working on the evaluation, as was discussed at the budget time. I think this particular position, because it had so much conversation with the council, you felt, or the council felt, that this was a point where you could ask for it specifically on this position, it's being a new position created, and you've had a lot of input and conversation on it. And I do believe that the town administrator is working on that for the other departments, but I can't really speak specifically on his behalf. But this one, he, this particular one that you have in front of you, I drafted it and he refined it, and so he has had input on this one.
Well, I think it's important because, it's important across the board, and we've talked about that at several budgets, but I think in this particular case, because, as you said, there was so much conversation as to the balance of what this person's going to do and how much of it that your outcomes really focus on the economic development part, and I think that's an important piece. And so, I mean, it's probably a good way to, you know, without singling somebody out, which we are doing, it is a new position, and there's lots of components to it, and we're concerned, and I think it will, you know, even if it's explained that way, just to see, we may find that there's certain things that they score low on just because it's too much, you know what I mean? And they are really good at meeting these outcomes, but that doesn't necessarily translate to the other parts above.
Does biannually mean every six months or every 24 months?
Every six months.
If I was applying for this job and I was faced with this prospect, I might think of taking a job somewhere else.
Well--
I think that the principal is right, but I don't think it makes sense to single out a position for this evaluation treatment without it being a more general approach to the way that the whole town is run. I mean, maybe there should be one of these about you.
Right.
You know?
Right.
Why pick out one position?
Right, I agree, and I guess I feel a little uncomfortable speaking to that point without the town administrator here, because that's really his, for him to decide.
That's why I suggest that we leave this to be considered a little more before we say yes or no.
Holsey, I tend to agree with you. Where I work in Alexanani, we have a performance evaluation, which I find it's a great tool because it allows me to see what I'm working on, how I'm improving, what are my objectives, and when it comes down to raises, I know exactly where I stand, and I know, chairman has talked about it, and the rest of my colleagues, Chloro, Mary Prowler, and when it comes to the budget halls, we always struggle with raises. We always struggle with that. We spend a lot of time because we want to make sure we treat everybody fairly and we do the right thing. And I think this is a nice start, and I agree with you, I think it should be kind of expanded all the way. That way, when it comes to budget season, we have that tool to use and guide, and there's no ifs, ands, or buts, or reasons for why certain people shouldn't be given a raise or not.
But, I believe when--
I like it, it's a good start.
It's what we in the US Navy call a fitness report, and promotions depend very much on the fitness reports.
Right, and I think, you know, right now, in my department, speaking just with the people in my department, it's more of a conversation, and it's more of a, you know, a correction as we need to correct.
Sure.
I think, I think what I heard with this position, we don't want to have a situation where we have someone who's not really, either the job that we've detailed for them isn't working out, or they're not working out, and that we're back here in a year saying, you know, what do we do? We can't really, we can't really find a way to, you know, move on.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that's what I heard. And so, I think that it's a good tool.
It is.
I think that it's going to be good for me and, you know, for the other people in the department, is, again, I don't have a formal evaluation procedure, but I think it's something that we're going to be, you know, moving to, so this will be a good, this will be a good start, I think, for that.
I think it is.
See, I think if we don't do this, it's the old saying about a failed plan is a plan to fail. So, we need to review this. We spend so much time, and a lot of this is very ethereal, very amorphous, so I think this is a great way to make sure that we're focused on this, because we need to be. And as I said, it's a great, we'll call it the epicenter of what we're going to do moving forward with everyone.
Well, and it'll, you know, I'm hoping that it'll be a way for me to sort of assess, you know, as Mary pointed out, you know, is this the right fit for the job description, the person, the way we have it moving forward, so.
Great point.
Yeah. And it's great for the candidate. The person that's in the position as well, you know what I mean? It's a nice check and balance for them, so they know where they stand, because you don't know what you don't know, right?
Right, and they'll come to the job knowing that there's going to be this expectation of a performance review and that there's going to be certain obligations that they're going to have to live up to, and they'll have to raise their hand too if it's not working out. You know, we're going to have to, we're going to have to talk about things and sort of--
It prompts conversation.
Exactly, right.
Absolutely.
I think in the beginning of the development of this position was the collaboration of this council saw fit to work in tandem with the Community Development Department and the administration, and also on the chairman's goals to see the return on this position going forward by this council. As far as the other positions, you ready, Mary?
Uh huh.
We're talking about evaluations, that's the administration, not this council.
That's right. I agree.
Right, right.
So, this is what we can control. Right? That's what you didn't say, Eddie.
Well, this is one we can control, and that's why I'm vocal, and that's why I'm also going to say I make a motion, we adopt this and receive and file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is from the treasurer regarding the use of the Gitteris Fund for water quality improvements at Gitteris School Property.
Hi, Julie.
Ethan, okay. Do you want me to just do, give a brief overview? Would you like to?
No, please, give us a brief overview.
So, Ed Tanner received a, applied for, I believe it was his application, right? He applied for and received a water quality improvements grant for up to $275,000 for the Gitteris School property. So, that, there is a match to that grant, and the match is approximately $231,000. The town had originally anticipated using about $160,000 from our current drainage account funds for this project, but there is a shortfall. While we were discussing the project and meeting with the school department, and we began discussing the Gitteris Fund, this is a fund that's similar to the Colt Fund. It's another endowment account. The funds have not been tapped into for, you know, as long as I could look back, I hadn't seen any withdrawals, so, I mean, I didn't look back 20 years, but I looked back five to 10 years. There's approximately $976,000 in that account right now, and we are looking to tap into that fund, not to exceed $75,000. We may not need that much, but that's what we're asking for approval to use the fund. The school committee has also been informed about this project and the use of the Gitteris Fund, and they are in support, according to Mario Andrade.
That's well put. The, just like the Colt Fund, this is not taxpayer dollars, this is out of the kindness in this instance of the Gitteris family. This is, there was a question, actually, the Colt Fund had a specific line in it that said, "for the school and for the grounds," and Gitteris was a little bit less clear on this, so we asked the town solicitor to weigh in on it. He did that in this memo, saying that it was fine and appropriate to use these dollars. So, again, it's not taxpayer dollars, but yet, the kids in the school and then everybody in the town gets to enjoy its use and the benefits from it, so.
So, with that, Mr. Chairman, on the allocation amount and the amount of--
Up to seven, not to exceed $75,000.
Not to exceed $75,000, and the recommendations of our town solicitor regarding this, and the superintendent of schools, Mario Andrade, I make a motion, we approve this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to ask Julie, putting on your treasurer's hat and thinking about the magnitude of the fund itself, is this a prudent quantity to be taking out in your judgment?
I do think, because we haven't tapped into the fund in so long, that it is appropriate. If this is a fund that's going to be start, if we're going to start taking advantage of these funds, I might recommend a lower amount if it's year after year, but it's something that we can watch for a while. You know, again, it's back to that approximately 4% to 5% of the fund is the appropriate amount, given that we haven't accessed or utilized these funds in quite some time, I think it's certainly appropriate this year.
Well, that's exactly my thing. I think we've done this every year recently, we wouldn't want to do so much, but--
Right.
If you think of it, in effect, being divided over a number of years, it seems like it's okay.
Yes, that was my--
Counselor Harris up brings up a good point, is that we do have a policy that we need to put in place for not only this fund, but for the Colt Fund moving forward, so there's a clear, defined way to access the, well, excuse me, apply for those monies, and then what appropriate dollar figure can be used, and if it isn't used, to go back into the fund, so.
Definitely.
I think we need to be careful, because now that everyone knows it's out there, we'll have requests constantly.
Kind of like alcohol.
They don't ever build backup, huh?
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to comment, I think this is a great project, Julie. It really prevents pollutants from flowing back in the bay, protects the building structure, and I was reading in the back, it says also preventing fines from the Rhode Island DEM. So, you know, again, if we were draining, so I think it's a good, it was a good, it was a good move on our part to approve. That's all I had to say. Sorry.
It's all the parking lot and the bus turnaround, it's nothing to do with the field, though, right?
If you take it, if you got a chance to go by there, it's going to be really, really nice. It already looks better, so.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, it is from the administrator regarding the National Grid Streetlight Buyback Program, and you have additional information provided by the Recreation Director.
I feel like I should do it. Walter, go ahead.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to recognize my colleague sitting next to me. She was nominated by the governor and yesterday was appointed by the Senate to be on the Rhode Island Energy Efficiency Resource Council.
Well, it's worth a round of applause. Nice job.
Diane, that's great. That's the most important. Good job.
Nice job.
A few months ago, we set up a task force with all the department heads, and Julie, Diane, and I were appointed on the Energy Efficiency Committee, and basically our task is to look for ways in which we can conserve energy and ultimately save the town a lot of money through grants and incentives and technology. As we all know, technology has changed over the last several years, and we want to take advantage of that. So, that being said, our first task was to look at the low-hanging fruit, which right now is the streetlights. The town owns 2020, no, there are 2020 streetlights in Bristol. They're owned by the National Grid, and we pay a maintenance fee of approximately $149,000 per year, which is money that we give to the National Grid to maintain all the streetlights in Bristol, whether they break or not. It's money that we give away, and if nothing breaks, we lose the $149,000. With me tonight also, I'd like to recognize Jerry Drummond, who is the, he's the lead Energy Efficiency for the National Grid on municipalities. Can I get that right, Jerry?
It's a good enough title.
He likes the title, so it's okay.
Also Sean Allen from Energy Conservation, Inc., which is a company that works on these technologies.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thanks for coming.
When we looked at the amount of cost, we came up with a better solution, that we buy the streetlights and we own them. Basically, when we, we're under a competition for up to $525,000 that the governor has appropriated for us, an incentive for transferring to LED. Jerry, jump in if I'm wrong with this so far.
Doing good so far.
We pay, if we buy the, the streetlights, we're estimating the cost to be about $100,000. Our existing, our existing maintenance budget every year is $149,480.
Crazy.
We've had, we have a proposal from a maintenance, a different maintenance program, which reflects $7 per light fixture, which $149,480 represents $75 per light fixture for maintenance. This new maintenance plan brings it to, instead of $149,000, it brings it to $14,000 to have them maintained by an outside source. Our maintenance savings right there for the first year-- Our maintenance savings right there for the first year, right off the bat, is $135,000 in savings. So if we just use the maintenance budget that's been appropriated this year of $149,000, and we purchase the lights for under $100,000, and then we add in that $14,140, the net cost to Bristol will be $114,000, and our maintenance budget will save $35,340 for the first year. After that, we, obviously, the $100,000 purchase cost comes back to us, and we save $135,000 every year. The $14,000, which is the new maintenance cost, is money that we still control. We don't give it away. It goes into an escrow account, and when something breaks and we need to use it and insurance doesn't cover it, we can use that, that fund.
So Walter, has all of this arrangement been negotiated with National Grid?
Yes.
And what are they, are they willing to sell it all, $140,000?
Hundred.
The Public Utility Commission passed a tariff last year that allows municipalities to purchase their streetlights. You'd be the third community in the state of Rhode Island. Barrington approved last week to purchase, and City of Providence submitted their request to buy the streetlights from us.
Is there any cost issue in regard to the fact that still these lights will be mounted on National Grid poles?
No, the tariff allows you to still mount on, on our poles or the Verizon poles that are in existence, and you would own the arm and the streetlight itself. We would own everything else. We still maintain ownership of the poles.
And we could on our own then change the streetlights to high-energy elements?
I would certainly encourage you to do that. That's what the $105,000 grant from the office...
You'd be another huge saving from that.
Yeah, you should cut your electricity cost by about 60%, and then if you add control technology on top of that, right now, they just turn on at dark and turn off in the morning, dusk to dawn. There are additional abilities in the tariff to, should you choose to dim your lights during certain parts of the night, or go with part-night, you could shut them off. Different communities have different ideas. We haven't got...
It's sort of to me, we can save more than 60%.
Absolutely.
But I think we also have to be realistic, that, this sounds so beautiful, there're gonna be little problems and little costs here and there that we don't anticipate, but I think the net result's gonna be positive for us.
Right. I think we want to monitor that maintenance savings that Walter's talking about. My suggestion would be, over time, like anything else, I would increase that budget 3%, 4%, 5% per year, so you have adequate funding. Also, you want to consider, you'll probably get a 10-year warranty when you convert to LED from the manufacturers. What happens in year 11? The town's going to need a budget to begin to replace those again, so you're gonna take those savings, monies that you don't spend in that maintenance budget, keep them in an escrow account of some kind, so that when the future, technologies may change, eight, nine, 10 years from now, we don't know what LED technology's going to look like. You'll have money in the budget to replace them.
An example of the future problems, that price of $14,000 is probably a little bait and switch. So I, I think we ought to recognize that this isn't clean sailing yet. There're gonna be problems, but it seems to me sure that we're gonna save money in the end, once we do it.
When Walter and I spoke a little bit earlier today, the way it was explained, well, the way that we, you explained it to me, was, step one, purchase what we have. When we purchase what we have, that gives us an opportunity to take advantage of converting incentives, all the things that are available to us. So step one in why we're talking about this this evening is, do we want to purchase the lights? So one of the things that I had a question on was, we've just talked a little bit about the maintenance on it, it's $7 a light. What happens if, I don't know, 20 of our lights go out? Is, or 30 of our lights go out, we have a surge or something, and we have to replace X amount of light bulbs and all of that? Is there a point, I mean, are we just tapping out of our $14,000? Is there a warranty that we're buying with this $14,000? I mean, how's that work? So...
The equipment is being bought as-is, so the motivation would be to convert to LED as soon as you possibly could. And again, that you're not asking for the money to do that tonight. What you're asking for, I believe, is to purchase the streetlights and a permission to, I think you're gonna vote to join in or opt-in with Barrington, who voted to partner with you last week, to do a request for proposals to get pricing on LED conversion and control technology, so you can make a financial analysis, both communities together, but I also recommend that Barrington do the same here. Also look at it to do it on your own. Give yourself the best of both worlds. If we buy together, the price is X.
It's good advice.
If we buy independently, is there a significant enough savings to do it? You may choose vendor A, they may choose vendor B. If there's not a significant savings, I want you to have the best of both worlds with the RP.
Talk to us about, we purchased the lights, we've just spent $100,000, we own these lights now.
Right.
What's the negative of doing such a thing? I mean, where's the downfalls? Where's the hiccups involved with something like this, if there is one, or them?
Mrs. Jones' lights burns out at 123 Main Street. She's not gonna call National Grid anymore. She's going to call probably your DPW department or somewhere else, so, or your service provider, which I'd probably recommend. You want to outsource as much of this, you're not set up right now within your DPW to handle that, so you'd outsource that. You don't want to spend a lot of money in the short term. If you have the vision of converting, if you did have that surge of 20 or 30, but you knew a month from now you're gonna convert to LED, you'd probably put that street or those streets on your first priority list to convert to LED.
And Jerry, the typical lifespan of a LED bulb is, what, five years? Three, five years?
You're gonna get a 10-year warranty from all the major manufacturers. They're expected to last up to 100,000 hours. They burn about 4,000 hours a year, that's dusk to dawn in Rhode Island. LEDs haven't been around for 25 years, so I can't tell you they're gonna last you 25 years, but if the, if the manufacturers are willing to guarantee it for almost 50,000 hours, 10 years...
10 years.
You can be assured that you're gonna get that.
Julie, you were gonna say something.
Thank you. I was just gonna ask that, if, if we're gonna move forward with this, I would also just ask that, early on, we have the council formally establish a restricted fund for the purpose of setting aside monies for the maintenance and eventual replacement, so that should be done by the council as a...
So the restricted fund would be for the maintenance of approximately $15,000, is that correct?
Correct. Maybe maintenance and replacement, as we used to just say.
Eventual replacement.
Would you do that now, or do it at the next budget time? I, I think we should do it now, upfront, assuming we're moving, if we were gonna move forward, I think we should do it now, so that any funds that are coming back would, could be, could go into an appropriate restricted fund.
So in theory, that new, that $35,000 savings could start that fund off.
Exactly.
Because we already had that budgeted, so we might not see any real savings this year, but then next year, we're only budgeting maybe another $20,000.
Right. And I don't have the authority to just take the budget money in.
Right, right. I just wanted to find out, what happens in the case of, if poles go down, either hurricanes, storms, or accidents, and the light fixtures are damaged?
So the pole, again, still being owned by National Grid, we'll put the pole back in place, or Verizon, whoever owns the pole, we'll still put our wires in place, the cable companies will put their wires in place, we'll still contact you to say, "By the way, your streetlight is still in the road now, you need to," or your contractor needs to get it back up. Now, you're gonna have an insurance claim against the vehicle driver in that certain case, but it is your, it will be your responsibility. It's very clear in the, in the service agreement.
So how much do those cost approximately? I mean, how much is that light fixture?
An LED light fixture, all in with the smartest control technologies, probably $300 to $500, depending on the wattage. You know, the lower wattages would be less expensive.
Oh, the whole arm and the whole thing?
Yeah. You want to replace it. It's not, LEDs are different than the bulbs that are in there now. Right now, you actually can change a bulb out, and by the way, those only last about five years, so you asked, what are some of your risks? About 20% of your inventory is going to burn out every year with the existing technologies, because they only last 20,000 hours, which is about five years. So that's how we go out and program replacements, so...
So you would convert as they burn out?
No, I would do a group, you don't want to see a street with high-pressure sodium and LED technology. Your eyes will go crazy with the orange light and the white light of an LED. You want to do a street at a time.
So talk to us about, so we say yes to this. We now own all of these lights. What's the timeline to go to the next step?
I would suggest, as Barrington did, that you authorize the community also request, make requests for proposals to do the LED conversion and control technology, as well as I think you have some other ideas as a community to look at. Don't just limit yourself to streetlights. Make this energy efficiency for your community buildings as well. So anything that consumes energy, I think you want it to include renewable energy technologies as well, to give you the flexibility with the appropriate vendor that wins your award. You have flexibility now to look at this as a community. I have one community that's actually taking the streetlight energy savings, and they're gonna fund some of the building improvements, you know, boilers and lighting in this building and other buildings that you own, and combine them. You've got a very good payback, you know, a five-year payback on something that's warranted to last for 10 years. It's a pretty good investment for a community. A boiler doesn't pay for itself very quickly, but as I see the infrastructure of our city buildings, I'm a lifelong Rhode Islander, they're 30, 40, 50 years old, well beyond the useful life of that equipment. This is the one funding opportunity we have to get those longer, capital-intensive, which normally means tax increase, and nobody here wants to hear tax increase. This is a funding mechanism, you can use your existing operating budget to fund what would traditionally be capital improvements, and package them together in a very financially palatable deal for the community. We also have the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, which you may be aware did pass, so six months from now, the treasurer would like to have your community's proposal for, here's all the things that we want to do. The street lighting, we could certainly do, but we could do auditing of all your facilities with National Grid's assistance, and say, here's our comprehensive plan to replace heating systems, lighting systems within our community, meeting some of the goals you may establish. A 20% energy reduction would be a reasonable result, to say we could cut our energy costs by 20% if we included this technology.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it's very clear to me, this is a no-brainer as far as savings goes, and it will definitely help us save tax dollars and allow us to, help us work with, do other projects as far as like roads with all the savings, and one hand washes the other, so without further ado, I'd like to make a motion to...
May I just ask a question first?
Sure.
Just one thing that, and this is just more of a curiosity thing. You know, right now, my understanding is that we pay X dollars per streetlight, which includes the, the light and the maintenance, and also the power.
Correct.
How does the power factor into it, once we own the lights?
So you'll be changed from a company-owned tariff, S14, to a customer-owned or municipal-owned tariff, which is S5. It's just a different rate, so you'll see a different rate on your bill for the S5 tariff. You're still going to pay the energy charge to power the lights that are there. We'll see the second biggest significant savings when you convert to LED. Now you're sending 60% less electrons through those wires, also going down.
So there's, there's like a charge per light, whether or not, whether or not it works of X dollars per year?
Correct. Based on the tariff.
There's not like a meter on it?
There is no meters on your streetlights at this point. There's a metering pilot going on right now through the Public Utility Commission, but right now, you are based on, you pay on what, if it's a 50-watt high-pressure sodium, that has an 11-watt ballast to make it work, you pay for the 61 watts, times the 4,175 hours, that's the number of hours dusk to dawn in a year.
So in the future, would you negotiate a different rate from National Grid per light, or would you allow them to charge whatever power we consume?
Right now, the way the tariff is written, because they are not metered, unlike buildings which have a meter in it that actually spin...
You think we could negotiate a lower charge per light, then?
You're going to pay a less, going to the S5 tariff, when you convert to LED, you will pay less money, because you're using less electricity.
And National Grid will agree to that?
It's already agreed to. It's part of the Public Utility Commission tariff that exists.
But the, but the only problem with that is that, it's asserted to me that the savings are more than that suggested revised price. I think we need to negotiate something that's a closer match to what the power that we're really using is.
The way the tariff works, it, it, there's seven categories, so if the new LED light uses between 10 and 30 watts, you pay based on the midpoint, which is 20 watts, times the 4,175 hours. That's the way it works with the outer meter right now. So it's always at the midpoint. So you could use a 28-watt light and only pay for 20 watts. That's the way the tariff is...
So that's already standardized?
It's already there. Public Utility Commission's already proved it.
So I know, Tim, you were gonna make that motion, but there's, Walter was gonna share the, so what happens now? Okay, now we do this, we go out to, we get, we want to buy LEDs. How much do they cost? How do we get the money back? Because now that we own these lights and we don't really want them, we're buying them so we can take a next step here. So take us to the next one.
All right. Well, right, right now, we're, we're spending on electricity, on supply, $53,000 a year for electrical. If, when we change over to LED, the estimate is that we will be spending $21,556. So that would be a substantial savings once we turn over to LED. But the, so the process moving forward right now would be if, our recommendation is that we, that we vote to own the lights, and then we'll notify the National Grid that, that we have a vote to own the lights. Then we're going to be, we're gonna be the third community out of five communities that are in line, approximately five communities that will be in line for the incentives and the grants that are offered through the, through the grid and through, through the governor's office to transfer over to LED.
So if we don't get that grant, though, what happens? Do we just keep, can we keep our ownership, or is that guaranteed?
Oh, no, no, you keep the ownership. The issue is whether or not you get in line for that $105,000. Right now, the state energy office has allocated $525,000 to help assist the community to do this. The early adopters are gonna get rewarded for doing that.
So that's a given? Is that what, that's what I'm asking?
Right. So, once you have a public vote that authorizes that, and you make the request on your behalf, I'll fill out the form, and, I mean, everybody knows that the Office of Energy Resources, I'm here tonight waiting for your vote, will put you in line with Providence and Barrington. So you'll, if you read their contract, you actually have to have a contract signed between National Grid and your community, but after your vote tonight, someone, the town administrator will have to sign a document, say, "We want to buy them." You make a request in, and we'll sign the contracts.
Then what we're going to be doing is Diane, Julie, and I are going to be making out an RFQ, RFP to a project expediter, and that company would be hired at $7, well, one of the, one of the rates is $7 per light fixture for the maintenance. Once the maintenance is in plan, is in place, then we will own the bill, own the lights. We don't want to own the lights until we have the maintenance plan in place. That's key. That's about it.
And there, I assume that there are numerous companies that do that maintenance and that are taking on this role, because this is something that's rolling out nationally?
Right. National Grid has 20 contractors, the project expediters, there's a master price agreement that has about 17 contractors, a lot of them are the same National Grid contractors. So I think you have plenty of flexibility to issue this. Walter's absolutely right. It's gonna take about 60 days from vote, request to do contract, to actually signing contracts. You have some time to go through an organized RFP process, to get the right service agreement, both temporarily, while your lights are still high-pressure sodium, and then negotiate pricing for service once they are LED, because you will get a one-year warranty, minimum material and labor, so you don't want to lock yourself into a maintenance contract at even $7 a light, particularly during that warranty period of the construction...
Right, right. So what about, and this is a little off the beaten path question, but the, the color of LED varies, and I just heard something recently that it's moving more towards looking incandescent, I believe. So in the downtown area particularly, where there's really not a big front yard, I mean, those very white, bright lights could be pretty obnoxious if they're right in front of your house. Are you able to choose, like, what bulb, what color?
Color rendering is very important, and I would highly suggest whoever wins your RFP does a sample for you. Put up five, 10, 20 lights, different colors. The Department of Transportation, I know we're kind of far away from Route 295, but the Department of Transportation actually used four different colors, four different manufacturers at Exit 7, there's a clover leaf, to help communities make this decision. Now, you may look up and say, "Wow, that's really bright, I don't like those." The brightness part, so communities in Massachusetts and our territories have done this for several years, also in Connecticut, I did work there. That's why I think the control technology is so important to do it, because you can actually dim these on an individual basis by time of day, and the safety for, to help the chief of police and fire, if there's, God forbid, an emergency of some sort, you can bring these up to full brightness in less than a second.
Oh, that's great, wow.
So I think the flexibility of dimming, Mrs. Jones doesn't like it bright, we can dial it down. You need more light at this intersection during rush hours, you can increase it.
Pretty cool.
It really is a good investment.
But what's, what's very interesting is if you walk downtown at all here, along High Street or Hope Street, it is really dark in the summer because of the trees, and so you, you really can't see, and where in the winter is quite different, and that's when it'll be shiny in your house, so it would be great to be able to adjust those.
Yeah, I'd highly suggest...
We also have another opportunity, which is, we have 2,020 lights right now.
Right.
We can review and say, "Do we really need 2,020 lights? Do we need 1,600 lights, or 1,500?" And I would lean on the people that are out on the road, certainly your department, and say, "We need one at every street corner? Yes. Do we need one middle over here? Maybe we have way too many. So, we have an opportunity for savings just by omission. Never mind the LED savings.
Exactly right.
The lights can also be programmed for an evacuation route. They can blink the route out of downtown Bristol, or away from the bridge, or wherever we want to direct traffic, they can go in sequence directing the traffic.
No airplanes, though, right? Just, just cars, right?
Yeah, I know, we don't want to let-
No, that's where I was going, so.
Very interesting.
So, I, I think this is great. I think the key component of the strategic plan is the change over time as a town of when we change over to LED, especially as you said, that it's not just going to be a quick fix of, one, you want to do streets at a time.
Correct.
So, also to Julie, Julie, to your point, what line item would you like it appropriated to and what department?
We'll just go into those fixed charges.
This would just be called a, it's just going to be a restricted fund. It's actually going to be outside of the general fund budget. So, I would assign a fund number to it at any time you can request balances from it, similar to any of our grant accounts. All of those have a separate fund number, so you don't see it in the general fund budget. Does that make sense?
I can't come up with that number right now.
No, I don't need the number.
You don't have the budget in front of you?
I just need you to establish a restricted fund.
Restricted fund is part of our motion.
Thank you. Yes, exactly. Thank you.
I feel a motion coming.
All right. All right, I'll try again. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the move forward owning the LED streetlights and to create, to work with the treasurer to establish an account for maintenance and replacement.
Restricted.
Restricted funds.
And maybe, Tim, you can include in that the proposal as presented this evening, so that way it ties in.
And the proposal as mentioned, stated in the document here.
Before you vote, are you also-
Purchasing of the lights.
Correct.
Are you also going to authorize your energy committee to do a request for proposals to get pricing for-
Exactly. Great.
Include that in your motion?
And do we need to say to enter into contract with you, so we can make sure we get that state money?
Purchasing the lights, you authorizing that, I can put your application in tomorrow.
Does anybody else want to add anything to this motion? Mike, what's the motion, Michael?
Lou got it.
Lou, you got it?
So, we have a very large motion. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Spectacular. We look forward to this.
Congratulations.
Thank you for having me repeat that.
Something we've talked about a long time.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, from the administrator regarding the Code Red implementation.
Chief, can you just remind us again where, where we go to sign up for this?
You can go on-
Bristol website?
You can go on our website and just click down-
Can you just say it for the public out here?
You would go on to the Bristol website, click on where it's Code Red, and it's self-explanatory. It'll allow you to enroll whatever phone numbers you'd like to have notify you, whether it be your cell, your home, any number you have, a business number, we'll be able to immediately notify all, all numbers that are listed there.
And are you able to sign up for other people, or do you have to go on through them? Or could I say, you know, can I sign up my phone numbers and say my mother's phone number?
Yes, you can.
Great program I like to receive and file.
That's actually at the bottom of our website on how you do it. This is a, as, as been spoken about before, it was, it was a program that we were going to have to pay for, and because we took advantage of a pilot program. I know we had a press release or press event recently, I was, I didn't know about it till the last minute, so, but this is a wonderful thing. I don't know if you can see the Code Red on the bottom there. You just click on it. I've done it, and I've gotten a couple of emails saying nasty weather coming in, and depends on what you want to sign up for is what you can get. So, it's a, it's a great program.
You're absolutely right. It's a great tool to have at this time in, in, in different events that come across, whether it's, you know, a notice for a tornado. Later on, we'll be utilizing it for road closures, snowstorms. And it'll, it'll be multifaceted through myself, the fire chief, and the highway director for all different types of notices to the residents.
Works something like the school departments have, right? I mean, basically that, they just call you and you-
Right. Connect that, where they notify the school parents if there's going to be an early release, if there's an emergency message, or if there's a cancellation.
And, and it does give you the option, too, if you like text, email, or you want a telephone call. You'll actually literally get a telephone call with a, with a computerized person telling you exactly what's going on.
Fantastic.
Great program.
Computerized person.
Computerized person. I just made something up tonight. So, we have a motion to receive and file. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. The, the next item, also from the administrator regarding the road paving update.
What is this?
Well, I'm happy to see Blue Boulevard on this list, because that is such a disaster for, for a street that brings in, you know, where all of our businesses are located. Sorry?
Agreed.
Chief, you like to comment? Well, our honorable administrators away, but as DPW director has stated, the 29th will open up the bids, and we'll be meeting going forward with the road program, so. Excellent. Good news. Anything else to say?
Do you want to add anything, Kevin?
I think that covers it. With south-to-bid right now, it'll be advertised for the next two weeks. Bids will be open on the 29th and before the council as we go forward. And as the councilman stated, excuse me, Blue Boulevard is part of that, along with a number of other roads as well, and varying degrees of just resurfacing some in full-depth pavement replus, replacements, so, pretty involved contract.
This council's very aware of the issues of the roads that are out there, and we have all intentions of, of doing more than's happening right now. This is what we have for money right now, but we need to do more, and we will.
Well, Mr. Chairman, last meeting, in case people missed it, solicitor is drafting up a referendum for the next election to appropriate funds going forward, need be, to position ourselves and just address the situation.
Spectacular.
Excellent.
Kevin, I don't know if this is out of order at this time, but I'd just like to mention one element that, you know, the state repaved top-squash roads, where you first end a top-squash. Why are there such lakes on that road? I drove over it a little while before the meeting tonight, and there's just deep lakes. Is there some way that we can control these contractors so that roads drain to the side and not have gullies? Same is true with sidewalks in Bristol, some of the recent work. There are puddles because they don't tilt them correctly. Is there any way we can improve our control of that over what we've done in the past?
For our own roads, yes. For that particular road, if I remember correctly, that was an immediate repair as a result of Hurricane Irene, and that had to do with the seawall washout.
Well, yeah, great, and I'm just setting that as an example of what can go wrong.
It cut the community.
We know that if you drive around Bristol after a big downpour, there are a number of places where there are deep lakes. And all I'm saying is, I wish we could improve our cognizance of that when new jobs are to be done, that there be proper side drainage instead of these great puddles occurring.
We actually have a drainage committee, Halsey, that those items, as they come up, get put on that list and then prioritized to be addressed. Again, it's just like the pavement program, its funding associated with that. I will tell you, there are drainage in this town right now, that it's all corrugated metal pipe that's rusting out, okay? And it needs to be replaced. So, there's, you know, if we can ever get enough staffing to get it ahead of ourselves to do a proactive drainage program for replacement, as we're looking at the roads being resurfaced, we need to do that as well.
Well, I understand that, but, but it seems to me that what I'm asking for is a greater supervision. I mean, I know some sidewalks, like my nephew's, where the new pavement is tilted into his steps, and there's a big lake there whenever the rain starts. That shouldn't happen, and it seems to me that, you're just coming back to the department, you haven't done any of these. Can we have a policy to be more cognizant of that control when the new work is done?
Yeah, well, it should be part of the plan review when they're submitted for either road replacement, new roads, sidewalks, or what have you. Site plan review, and part of that is a drainage analysis and assessment, you know, existing conditions versus proposed. So, you are right. I mean, I don't want to tell you that you're wrong, you are right, and there are areas in town that have drainage issues, and we constantly put those on the list.
Well, I'm confident it's going to improve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The council's pleasure on that item?
Is that a receiving file?
Yes.
Motion to receive and file, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, this is put on here at the request of the chairman regarding the town council contingency budget line.
Actually, credit where credit is due, as Mary called me the next day in regards to this and the purpose behind it was, obviously, we lost our officer, Richard Gene George, recently. And Mary asked if this council would consider contributing to that family, and all the monies that they've spent, not, including all the things that it takes to, to get him home. And there was so much involved, and there continues to be so much involved. And I thought it was appropriate, and why this is written this way is that it's, we had monies from last year left over from our council contingency, and this action was asked to be done in last year's budget. So, I thought it was appropriate to transfer those monies to this year and then appropriate a dollar figure. And I'll let Mary suggest that dollar figure, because this was her initiative.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I was thinking that $1,000 would be appropriate amount, just to show the family our appreciation for their son and, and all of the expenses that they were incurring, not only, you know, to move the body here, which was very complicated, as we all know, also the time they were spending in Costa Rica while it got sorted out. You know, we, this, it was between, you know, it was after our last meeting, and it didn't seem like we could do it right then and there. So, I know Nathan had spoken to the chief, and he thought that this would be appropriate, would still be fine timing, that they have incurred many, many expenses in relation. So, that is why it's on this agenda. So, I would move that we would appropriate $1,000 from our council contingency from the last fiscal year to, I'm not really sure, Chief, would it go to your department, or would it go forward to the family, or made out to the family?
I would say made out to the family.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion?
Just that, during the hot time, Chief, I must commend you and your department on the send-off of Officer Gene George. It was just, it's a hard time, but well-respect to your men and women of your force and yourself on that send-off was just a tribute that is just unbelievable, so.
Thank you very much. And also, thank you for the donation with regards to the men and women of the Bristol Police, and I know the Gene George family, who I've continuously been in touch with. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Then, we have the special report from the town representative to the convention and visitors bureau, Mr. Bridgerton.
You should have brought this up earlier when you were up. You could have gotten out of here.
We tell you now.
When you were up there, you should have said, and by the way.
And by the way.
Does he have any questions on my report? You did, you did.
But then we would have had all empty seats.
Thank you.
It's a less empty house, but I wanted to give you some more paper.
All right. Steve, thank you.
I think you have it in here, don't you, on our stuff?
Yeah.
Fourth annual season?
All right, we'll take two.
If I may, for the record, too, this is a special event.
So, everybody can hear you at home.
I want to bring to your attention, this, I have one copy, and I know you didn't get this. This was a special event that Art Night hosted for the Society of Wetland Scientists back in early June, to bring in professionals from across the country. They're having a convention in Providence, and one of our board members saw fit to bring them out to the East Bay, to Warren, and to our town, to the Bristol Art Museum. So, this is part of our economic development program. So, this, I'm going to give you this. At the same time, make the same trip up, but I'm going to show you a rendering of the proposed hotel for Gooding Avenue, because it's part of the report.
Do you have any T-shirts?
That's for you to keep in the record, too. In the lateness of the hour, I don't need certainly to go through this report. I, I hope that all of you had a chance to review it a bit, and I do have one short message. And before I do that, though, I want to also mention that as a courtesy to all of us, our CEO, Evan Smith, is here, if you have any questions of him regarding budgets.
Thank you for coming.
And also, our wonderful Kathy Morrison, who's been running our visitors' center here, as well as the Newport-based visitor's center for many, many years, our VP of Operations, and she too be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you for coming.
In my report, I mean, it's, it's good, certainly with the statistics. Things keep improving throughout our community in terms of bed taxes are increasing, which is part of the so-called issue, in terms of a problem. We're still limited by that. I have some frustration, as I've expressed in the report, so really, one, one message to you is help, because I think we, we need your, your political influence where it counts in terms of maybe speaking to DEM. The hotel has been held up. It's been a long, drawn-out process. The recent British Car Show that we had, many of the people who came weren't able to stay in our town, having barely 60 beds. They were in Middletown, Secunk, and elsewhere. We want this to change, all of us, because those people will be in our town not just to sleep, but to shop and to, you know, help the economy along. I, I know you know that. So, this, this hotel, if you can address, whether it's to Ms. Janet Coit or other representatives of DEM, there's, Mr. Maloney has been very, very helpful with providing information. I think it's going to be approved. Again, it's been almost two years in the making, but the costs also increase. Mr. LaFrance has been extremely patient and committed to this project. He's spent over $30,000 in the, the testing. He looks to spend another $15,000 before all is said and done on the various soil tests. And then, we hope that a shovel will be put into the ground, and that in time we'll have this. As you've heard me say before, the, you know, the best days of Bristol are, we're on the brink, they're coming, but, you know, to stay in neutral or even to step backward sometimes, this is not, you know, going to advance our cause. We need some help that you can assist with, your approval of signage for our visitor's center. I've said this before, the last several reports. I know there was a plan that still we're looking into. My understanding is about uniform signage. It's a very prudent idea, there's no doubt. We don't need haphazard, you know, different signs here and there that don't make sense, but even temporary signs that, if they prove cost-effective, we think they would, we want to erect a couple of signs directing people north and south, and maybe even Menacom as well as Hope, toward our visitor's center. Because right now, no one knows it's there until they really stumble upon it, as I placed the report. So, working maybe with Kevin, Department of Public Works, we could get some signs up that would say, visitor's center, you know, mile ahead or whatever it is, just VC or even the I, the, the universal information sign. So, that's another area. The cutbacks, the budget, I think it's so stated, we're not going to receive the 47% bed tax. It amounts to a 300K loss. Might need your help for monetary funds to help support the visitor's center next year, if there is to be one in Burnside or anyplace in Bristol. There have been some changes with personnel. We've got professional staff there, and it's operating very, very well. We'll have even more accurate numbers in terms of attendance. We need to find out a little bit more also from another state agency regarding the Marine Center that's being built in the old armory. There might be restrictions on the use. I think Diane might know a little bit more about that. The State Preservation and Heritage Commission has apparently said, we can use it this way or that way, but it has to have historic precedent, I believe. And having a dining facility doesn't look like it's going to be, going to be able to do that, which of course would help generate revenue, to help it pay for itself, and so on, and you know those, those things yourself. So, that's something we need to look further into, if it's Ted Sanderson or others there. If it's Ted Sanderson or others there, that we might be able to exploit the fullest possibilities of that great Marine Center that is about to become a real reality. So that's another thing. We've got to look at all the possibilities in terms of working together and collaborative. Explore Bristol, thank you again for the increase in the budget or maintaining the budget and not decreasing it. And we need to become more active in that respect in terms of pulling together all our assets. But that hotel is, is got to be a priority. We need to keep people in our town and not send them out of town. If you have any specific questions about this or any of the things in the report.
It was well-written and lots of information there, some of it disappointing, as you've mentioned, as you preface your comments, but we appreciate what you do and the information that you're sharing.
I'm frustrated, Stephen. I still remember you and I utilizing our 30-second spot down at Leo's years back and we both echoed each other of what was our number-one priority that this town is facing, its accommodations. I think we are all frustrated and the communication, and I know from Ms. Coit, she's well aware and, you know, she has come through many times for this town. I think in general, and it's the piece of property that is the stickler of, maybe if it was a different piece of property, it would have already been built by now. I just think, I think that's been the holdup all along is just the schematics of the piece of land that, you know, we're trying to accommodate to get the best utilization of a great hotel from the LaFrance family. And like you said, I'm hoping that we're at the, the end of the road where this can just get going and all the approvals done. So, but we will put more pressure even though we have been, so.
I actually made a call today, find out what was going on with that. And there was a recent letter back to the LaFrancis with deficiencies. Sounds like a horrible thing, it's actually not. It's just the issues that they have to hit and questions that need to be answered and this is a very, very recent one. There's been a few of them and it's, it's nothing to do with anybody except this is how those processes work with DEM. That particular, as Ed mentioned, that particular property is an interesting beast because the water tends to look like it goes uphill and doesn't seem possible, but when you, when you stand over there, it actually goes up the hill a little bit and then goes down, which is absolutely mind-boggling, but, but I know that we are on that and we have made some calls and we want to make sure that it moves forward too. We also do want to make sure that we're behind the project, that our planning and zoning board has also been an opportunity to say, yes, we'll give it a thumbs up, so to go through its correct process, but it's got to get there, right? It's got to get to that step so we can say yes to it.
No doubt. And I know you realize that there's a direct link between accommodations or present condition of lack of accommodations and why some of our storefronts are vacant right now. And I have every confidence that once we have better accommodations, more of them, that we'll see more retail activity, being able to support it. And that's what we're all in favor of.
Steve, I had a question and, you know, I couldn't help but think about that point when, you know, about the hotels, when they were talking about the Trident race and all these families coming, you know, and what you've talked about with the British Car Show and weddings and everything else. First of all, I couldn't agree with you more in your assessment of, you know, the governor's move for centralizing the, you know, promotion of the state. I mean, if that was going to be done in addition to what we've all been doing, but when I first heard that, I go, that's not going to be good for all the work that we've been doing in particular, maybe beneficial for some folks that haven't done as, as much as Newport and Bristol's trying to do. But my, just my question for you is, you talked about the visitor center and I'm curious about how much that would cost or what would be a budget item for something like that? I mean, even if it were one person or a person with volunteers, I mean, how would we do that without taking on an enormous expense? What would that be approximately? Do you know?
I think Kathy or Evan's better qualified to answer that than I am. Mary?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Evan Smith. I'm president and CEO of the Newport and Bristol County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Welcome.
DBA, Discover Newport. To answer your question specifically, counselor, this year we'll invest a little over $20,000 running the visitor center, get right down to the brass tacks. We, we have looked at the Bristol Visitor Center as an ongoing experiment. It was five years ago that we were invited by Diane Maderos to come and, and to see if this was possible. The current visitation, it's somewhere between 3,000 and 4,000 people. You can do the math if you, if you divide 3,000 or 4,000 by 20,000, that's a high cost per visitor. And, and so I, I think that the experiment is coming to a point now where we would welcome the opportunity to sit down with the town in a workshop. I think that it's time to explore whether you have an unmanned visitor center, whether you have, you use visitor services as a function of an application, a phone application, as opposed to a manned visitor center. So I think everything has to be looked at, whether some, some communities do this as a function of volunteers and whether there's groups from within the community here, so many different people, very active merchants association here, Explorer Bristol does a fabulous job here. It, it really comes down to how you want to assemble that, if you will, and there's a number of different ways to accomplish it. But as Stephen said, next year, our budget's been reconfigured. We're going to lose 10% of our destination marketing funds, which is about 300,000. I have until January 1st of 16 to figure out the unpleasant task of paring down my company by 300,000, not looking forward to it. But we're going to do the best we can and, and still serve the dying communities that we serve, so. Is there any other questions while I'm up here before I turn back to podium?
Just thank you for coming.
Yeah, I just had a question about the, the temporary signs in regards to getting those. I know, Steve, you had mentioned those, those are, those are needed probably at the bridge and at the, in Warren, just on the border near the, so are you, so those would be seasonal signs that would go up during, during the beginning of the season, we'll take those down. Where do we, Diane, can we work with you to get those or as far as?
Yeah, I mean, I can maybe look at the placement of them. I'm thinking that you'd want to have them on Medicom to direct people down to the visitor center. I think that's the purpose.
Right, right.
So we'd probably have to look at an appropriate placement and then I can work with the DPW director to have some signs made. They're not going to be part of our wayfinding program because it'll be, you know, something we want to get done sooner, so I can work with the DPW director on that.
I think it was not just Medicom. I think Steve's point was also on Hope Street, but further out, you know, in both directions so that people know there is one and, and where to, where it is located.
Where to get it, yes. Okay. I'll, I'll work on that.
Thanks, Diane. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I can work with Diane.
Steve, I could just ask one other question. You, in this very interesting memorandum, speak about the slowness of DEM in approving the location for the hotel, but isn't that a little more complicated? I mean, it's asserted, there's a lot of wetlands there. It isn't some automatic process. They've got to evaluate it and come back with a recommendation based on either facts or at least judgments, so.
There's no doubt.
The conclusion that they come to isn't something we know yet.
I, I think there have been some decisions or conclusions made from previous tests, but they.
Oh, you, you think they've passed it?
I believe that Five Acres was approved.
So you're, you're complaining about the slowness of the process, not about the anticipated result?
Yes, yes. We're anticipating that the approval is going to be finalized. It's just a question of finalizing it so they can go forward. You, you know, I'm an environmentalist and I don't think anything should be done haphazard or just put a shovel to the ground without due diligence.
Well, that puts a whole different complexion. I thought there was still uncertainty as to what the conclusion would be.
Well, we had heard that Five Acres seemed out of the nine to be buildable and so we were all excited really about nine, nine months ago, almost a year ago. And then, and we had anticipated this past spring there was going to be a shovel, even late as it was, but it hadn't come yet. And they still don't have the final approval. Keith might have a little more insight on that because I know he's had some conversations with Mr. LaFrance. But, but we're anticipating, yes, it's going to happen and we're, we're grateful to Mr. LaFrance for seeing it through and, and paying the price, being committed to it.
What's the timeframe, once the approval comes in for the hotel to be completed?
I do believe it's a little over a year, it might be 15 months.
Wow.
That sounds about right. I think so. That rendering shows it's going to be a, a good modestly priced hotel. I mean, Comfort Inn is, so it's a good mid-market target too, something we can all afford.
Oh, it's not a Hampton Inn?
I think it's a Comfort Inn.
Comfort Inn.
Yes.
Right.
And that's, that's the rendering, so I want to share that with you.
Steve, Steve, just quickly, I reached out to Rep. Ken Marshall on the hotel and ways that, you know, we could help move this along and, and he, he encouraged a letter. But I, I was, I talked to the chairman and I tend to agree with him, have our, have our boards and commissions, you know, sign off and then us, we can send a letter to kind of move it along in some way to kind of get the approval process. And I know that's why you're here, kind of hoping to get something, so maybe, maybe we can get that moving quickly.
Your actions would be very important, I think.
You, you'll be happy to know too that by our request as, as the town, that we've reached out to our reps and senators and they have had conversations and shared those conversations.
Thank you.
Because it's important to all of us because we understand the value of it and we also understand that this is a business owner looking to start a business and the benefits to everyone is great, but this is also a business owner looking to start a business.
Exactly. It, it is a business owner, but it's going to impact many other business owners, all of us.
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think Keith has some remarks.
Yeah, I, I, first of all, Mr. Chairman, I want to recognize that you and I have had a couple of conversations about this and you've been very forthcoming in terms of your support of it and your belief that it was moving along.
Not fast enough.
Words to that effect. Yeah, it, it really is, I think the term is outrageous, that after two years this hasn't been approved. And I know, Halsey, you may not appreciate my saying that, but that's what it is.
Well, I'm just, what is the situation? Because if they've made a favorable conclusion, they should publish it immediately. If they haven't yet decided, that's a different story.
It, it has not been decided. And what happens in the process, and I have, you know, an assessment of the process, these letters with deficiencies, they come months, months after the deficiencies are identified. Why can't it happen in a more efficient manner? It's, it's ridiculous. We were at a meeting with Eric Godwin, who is the newly-appointed Rhode Island Director of Regulatory Reform. He came to an East Bay Chamber meeting about 10 days ago. Steve and I were there, along with the town administrator, so forth. When I mentioned the need for reform in DEM, there were 20 people in that meeting and they all said the same thing. They said, "Yeah, everything takes too long." And I've reached out to Mr. Godwin because he volunteered, volunteered that he would like to meet with us, you know, Steve and myself, Mr. LaFrance and whomever else, to help overcome whatever the obstacles are that seem to be in the path. And I agree, as has been stated, if this property is not a place where a hotel can be built, then just say so. I mean, just say so. Now, most recently, this is just one example, one of the deficiencies came back, it was because of their, how they approached their catch basin requirements as established by the DEM. They worked from what is in, on their website, which was where they were directed to go in terms of what standards to be met in terms of how you construct the catch basin. They redid their application, presented it. Some significant time later, they came back and they said, "Oh, those are no longer current. So here's, here's the new ones." Really? That's what they're going through. So it does appear, I spoke with Richard today, they have the sense, it appears, that where they are now, it's going to get approved sometime in the near-term future. Let's hope that happens. My sincere wish would be that you guys press it. The data is very clear and this is a 76-room hotel. You now see the schematic that I provided to Steve. That's pretty significant. And here was Mr. Tucker here earlier, talking about 2,000 people coming in for this Trident thing and they're calling him, "Where can I stay?" Where's that money going? For every hotel room, the occupants of that room spend $300 each day in ancillary expenses that they encounter staying in that room. Gasoline, restaurants, shops. $300 a day, 76 rooms. Those rooms, as you well know, would be packed most of the summer. This project needs to happen. Our storefronts that are empty, how many of them could still be in business today if this project happened on a reasonably timely basis? Since he started this program, he has built and opened an 85-room Town Place Suite in Wareham, Massachusetts. He is in the final construction of a 105-room Marriott Courtyard Hotel in Littletown, Mass, Littleton, Massachusetts, which will open early next year. And he is breaking ground next year, next week, excuse me, for an 85-room Fairfield Inn in Plymouth, New Hampshire. That's all happened since he expressed interest in this lot on Gooding. Tuesday's paper, all about Rhode Island Pursues Tourism. Our governor made this big pitch out here. I was there with her. Sounded great. Five million-dollar tourism branding campaign that are encouraging more visitors and convince people that the ocean state is a great place to start business. What?
I would say this, I don't think you, they have one person disagreeing with that thought process in the sense of, we see the value. There's no question about that. So you just asked for assistance again and my response is, let's talk tomorrow and, and I will see if we can get some of that assistance moving along. How's that?
I mean.
That's fine. And I do believe Ms. Coit, who has a very good reputation, is good at what she does, but she's not in the trenches. And I think the people in the trenches need a boot in the ass. Pardon my French.
Well, who deals with her directly? Diane, do you deal with her directly?
Walter does.
And Walter, I mean.
And our experiences have always been very stellar.
I know. And I don't know whether if, you know, on behalf of the council, in a positive letter to just send off to her from the council itself and say, "We've always enjoyed this great working relationship, we're just curious as to why this is taking so long, you know, we really are in need of this." I mean, is that something that would be appropriate that could get out? I mean, you know, Lou could draft that. Or then maybe one of you could potentially follow up with it. I mean.
I, I agree that we need to reach out and, and I would, I made a note, I would like to reach out to Mr. LaFrance too and see if we can get a copy of the application package that was submitted to DEM because we have had a concept review many months ago, but in. submitted to DEM, because we have had a concept review many months ago, but nothing yet. And I think he's trying to get the DEM approvals, secure those, and then come back to the town. But I think we should probably...
Go parallel.
Go parallel.
So let's do that. Let's take the next step.
That's what I would like to do. And I would like to just find out a little bit more about the timing.
And we'll commit to our next meeting, either the meeting of the 29th, which is in three weeks, that be that or before, we should have some updated information, and hopefully some successful information. So, but we'll commit to that. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's great. And I think that, you know, the other thing I would like to do, and maybe with Walter's help, is maybe just get a copy of the process that's evolved through the DEM, because I know that, because this is a wetland area, there's... there are steps, as you pointed out. There's a determination of the amount of wetlands, and there's a determination of type of application. I think, if I remember correctly, this was an application to alter, which is in the processing of permitting the most...
In Rhode Islandese, it's wicked hard.
It's wicked hard, right.
So, yeah, it is.
It's not supposed to be easy to alter wetlands. So I think that that's all part of what's happening here with this process. And I think I'd like to have a little bit more information on the chronology of the applications, the resubmissions, the deficiency letters, so that we can speak with some more knowledge about exactly what the hiccup has been.
And then we can figure out what we can do to help.
It may have been like, it may have been beneficial in hindsight, had he worked with you guys maybe right along, in terms of, you know, your experience in dealing with them, and what this may mean, or, you know, what's current, what isn't. But, so I think that's one part. But I think absolutely, if they've not gone through the town's process, they need to get that done, because we don't want DEM to come forward, and now they've got another three, four months of going through the town.
Typically, I mean, what happened here was not incorrect. The timeline is certainly too long.
Right, 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 right.
But with the approval process that happened, it's got to get DEM approval before we, as a town, planning, zoning, everybody else can. So you need that done before. So the process is correct, it's the timeline is just painful. But the other part is that, as you mentioned, there is always the whole story.
Right.
So let's get the whole story and figure out what we can do to help, because I don't hear anybody who doesn't want to help.
No, 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 we need to, you know...
We'd all due process, we all want this done right. But I agree with Keith that... I don't want to hear any story, like, say, they approve it tomorrow, but send the approval letter to the LaFrancis six months.
Right.
Saying, "Oh, you've been approved," and then there's a postmark date of six months. That's unexcusable.
Right.
That's the unexcusable part.
You're right.
And I think what you've discussed tonight, in terms of Diane's becoming more involved, would be a very real benefit. And maybe that could have happened, you know, a year ago. The LaFrancis, by the way, the reason they're not pressing on other fronts on this is plain and simple. They've got 45K into it, and if the DEM says no, they don't want to have another 50 that's going to go down the tube, or whatever. I mean, so we need this first. And there we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And speaking of hiccups, what about the Maritime Center and the Historical Heritage Society? Is that something we can...
We have been talking about that, and I think we need to reach out to them tomorrow as well. I think, you know, we've had a very good... We did reach out today, we're going to reach out again tomorrow. I think we've had a good relationship with them. They've been working with us to kind of give us the approvals as they can going forward. So I think we need to just let them know that, you know, again, as Julie said, we reached out to them today, we need to follow up tomorrow, and just make them aware that this is, you know...
Well, there's an old saying, that we don't know what we don't know. So if you need our assistance...
Okay. Okay. We've been, we've been sort of waiting to the absolute time that we've needed it. We don't want to, you know, use up our goodwill on the small things that we can kind of work through with them. So when we need you, we'll let you know.
The sad thing, though, I think, is that it takes so long, and you... There's no connection in state government sometimes with the ultimate goal. So you have a governor, in this case, that talks jobs, 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 and businesses, and economic development, brings in these whole, you know, these high-powered people, allegedly high-powered, I don't know if they are not, but... And yet, where it really counts, you know, the line people, the mid-management level, still goes, hums along the same way. It doesn't really make a difference. And that's sort of the sad part, you know, that they don't... They're not subscribed to the same message, so...
Just to... And I hate to be another person, to bring another sore subject up, but we're talking about the Maritime Center. And Diane and I have had this conversation, I don't know if you've had. I've brought someone else who's very interested in that location to open a restaurant, a high-quality restaurant. Sal Leota, he runs the Back Eddie out of Westport, Massachusetts. He came in, he visits the site, he's had design people and so forth. I talked to Diane about it, and the historic commission has made the decision that you can't make any changes to that grand hall. So if you remember...
Mr. Chairman, I'm worried, no, no, I'm worried we're going to get into an open meetings issue. This is not on your agenda. Now, you have the right to add it to your agenda, but I'm going to ask you to take a vote as to whether or not you want to discuss the Maritime Center tonight. You have to add it to the agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we've received this, receive and file?
Second. Okay, so we have a motion, a receive and file. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Okay.
So I can't speak to this issue?
It's... What's the pleasure of this council? Would you like to...
I would just make a motion that we add, just briefly, you know, to add this to the agenda, and just have this brief conversation. We can't take any action anyway, because it wasn't advertised, but... So I would... I move that we add it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Thank you, and I'll be very brief. But again, now, I see Mike Burns was in the audience, and I guess he left. But Mike and I sat on the planning committee for the... with Diane and a number of other people, in terms of the planning of creation of the Maritime Center. It was very clear in that process, for the Maritime Center to be successful, we had to have a significant tenant who was going to provide the money. Because the reality is, that what we get from the boater, who's using the lockers and the showers and the washing machines, is clearly insufficient to carry the expense that we've invested. It's a million dollars in grant, roughly, right? I think that's the number. And then a million dollars from the town. That's a lot of money. What the historic just was saying, you can't touch that grand drill room, or whatever it is. So you can't touch it. How can you put anything in there? So they will basically await for it to become financially a failure, before then Diane can go back and say, "We need, you know, we need to fix this. We need to put a restaurant in there."
Donnie, do you agree with that?
We can't, can't we put a restaurant upstairs if there's an elevator in the building?
Well, I just...
Or there's offices and things?
I think, I think we're kind of maybe getting a little bit ahead of the task at hand, and that's where Keith and I have sort of agreed to somewhat hit the pause button in the term of the permitting and the processing. I mean, right now, we've been tasked with getting the Maritime Center built. Yes, Keith is correct. One of the main issues that the state historic has is that the Drill Hall is a character-defining feature of the building. That's one of the things that makes it as significant as it is, because that tells you what it used to be used for. And so they've got concerns about the things that we want to put in there associated with the Maritime Center, the washers and dryers. We want to build a low wall to separate the Maritime Center from the basketball courts, so that we can keep the basketball courts for the adult leagues that we have, and, you know, create some sort of a...
Division.
A division, thank you, so that, you know, you don't have the basketballs hitting you while you... So we've been working with them to try to get approval for that. And the way I've kind of left it with Keith is that, you know, we're not really at that point for a restaurant. I mean, we're just trying to get the Maritime Center done. So it just felt like we were kind of getting a little bit ahead of ourselves to try to ask for other things that we don't yet really have definitive plans for.
When's your next meeting?
Doesn't it need to be designed in, though?
When's your next meeting?
Well, the design right now is for the Maritime Center, and then there's a... There's going to be a partition wall, a low partition wall, and then the basketball courts will remain. We're not touching the upstairs. We moved the heating and the electrical up to get it out of the floodplain, and make room for the showers and the bathrooms. But that's the extent of the second-floor revisions, and so...
But Diane, I thought all of that was approved and set in stone, and just work was supposed to get done.
That part was approved. What we're waiting for final approval on now is the details for the Drill Hall, the details for the low wall, and the details for the washer-dryers in the Drill Hall.
I'm pretty sure...
That's really what we're waiting for, as to the Maritime Center.
So, this idea of having a tenant in there is something separate, isn't it?
Correct. And that's where I said to Keith, you know, "Let's just kind of get, let's get the Maritime Center done, and then when we're ready to revisit this for the..." You know, we're going to have the sprinklers in there, which is a good thing, because that will open availability up for other things. But, you know, I just felt like, we're not really at the point to ask for the restaurant yet, and we're trying to get the Maritime Center done. So that's kind of where we've... I felt that we should kind of stop it there for the time being.
When is your next meeting?
We're in the process of scheduling it now. It's either going to be Monday or Tuesday of next week. We're waiting to hear availability.
And then with that meeting, you will have some enlightenment in regards to what's going on with the state, or is it just a...
We're going to update on the status. I'm very hopeful that that will include an update from the state. But we'll have our owner's rep there to tell us what other construction is being done, has been done. We'll have some standard invoices for approval. But that's why Diane and I were looking to get ahold of somebody at the state and see if we can expedite the final approvals. We're doing construction in the building, they're working on the showers and all of the other things right now. So that's all moving forward. It's just this final, the final portion. I think you need to try to check out what some of the others are. I'm not, I can't say with certainty, but I don't know if it was a financial issue, or if it was, but as I'm listening to this, it's probably this issue. I mean, the Armory in Pawtucket had... I don't think anything's ever been done to the Drill Hall. It's all been upstairs, on the second level, when they had, you know, a performing arts school and everything was there. And it could very well be that the state wouldn't let them do it.
Well, right, and I think...
So I think you need to look at contingency plans for where else that restaurant could go, either in that building or nearby.
Right, right. And, yeah, Rob and Rog might be available. I think the other thing is that because we are using federal funds, that's what gets the state involved on the interior of the space. Normally, it's, you know, really more exterior. But it triggers more review because of the funding that we're using.
I'd like to do this, because this wasn't on the agenda, and obviously we voted to do that. Why don't we put this on our next agenda, that we can get an update about what's going on? And also, too, is that prior to the next meeting, if there's assistance that you need from this council, that you expressed that early, so we can, maybe we can have a positive information at the next meeting. But I'd also like to give everybody the opportunity to know that it's here, and then also speak for, and sneer around, whatever it happens to be.
I may just close with one comment.
Sure.
I don't want to speak for Mr. Leota like he's locked in. He wanted to pursue getting further information, getting his design team to put things together. I mean, he was looking at one to two years before the thing would be open. That's been stopped. So it's, you know, it's, why can't these things be done in parallel? It just seems to slow everything down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need any kind of motion on that? No? Okay.
Okay. The next item is an executive session, and now we have the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
Happy almost used-to-be Fourth of July. What a phenomenal parade event, and events leading up to it, with the concerts, with all that happened. Special thanks, and I'm sure that I'm going to hear this from my colleagues, too, is to the Police Department, the chief, your men and women, the men and women of our surrounding communities that helped us with that, the men and women of state and federal, too. I know we had a lot, a lot of people here, a lot that I didn't even know were here, but we're looking out for our best interest. Certainly out to the fire department, rescue, EMTs, again, just keeping us safe, and if any issues happen. And I know there was a couple minor things, and they took care of those expeditiously. DPW, not only preparing for with all the bandstands and everything that gets filled in, but kind of doing the Charlie Brown Magic Christmas tree afterwards, and making everything look beautiful. So I wanted to read something really quick here. This is an email from one of our residents, and I think this really captures what happened with the Fourth of July. "Nate, I'd appreciate if you could extend my heartfelt thanks to all the members of the town of Bristol for giving yet another fabulous Fourth of July celebration. Such a tremendous effort by all. The management of the activities and the great feeling of safety was perfection. Please extend my thanks to all. I would not be able to name all the committees and volunteers that were involved. So proud to be part of this place." I know this person, they actually just moved to Bristol a couple of years ago, and can't tell enough people where they live and how proud they are to be here. So, nice job to everyone. I know it's an immense amount of work, and in fact, I think the Fourth of July Committee just had a recent meeting for the next parade. So it never stops. Ray Galison was a perfect choice for the chief marshal, and everybody that came in, including our military, the Tortega... Tortega? Am I saying that right?
Tortuga.
Tortuga, that's what it is. It's Spanish for turtle. The Navy ship that came in was wonderful. So just all kinds of great stuff. And thank you to everyone that did all that they did. It was a wonderful day, and happy Fourth. Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yep. I concur with the chairman. Thank you. I know there was heightened security in Bristol, and I saw there were, you know, people were asking about it, and it looked like it was... Everything came out perfectly, and thanks to our Police Department and all our departments, thank you again for just doing everything that you do. We, I mean, we couldn't pull this off without you, that's for sure. I just want to quickly let everybody know that on this Saturday, July 11th, the Department of Public Works and the Bristol Recycles will be hosting the Annual Eco Depot Day at the DPW 111 Mount Hope Avenue from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This is your opportunity to properly dispose of your hazmat, paints, thinners, oils, household liquids, et cetera. In addition this year, get ready, Eddie, I know you've asked for this, you're going to be excited, the commercial-grade shredder will be available to dispose your confidential documents, files, and tax returns, et cetera. Please take advantage of this opportunity, since Rhode Island's resource recovery only comes to Bristol once a year, and you'll have to transport your hazmat to the Johnston landfill, or wait until 2016. If you miss the opportunity on Saturday, you can make an appointment to drop off the hazardous material. Please call the Eco Depot at 942-1430, extension 241. So hopefully you won't miss this Saturday. And again, it's this Saturday from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and it's at Mount Hope Avenue, 111 DPW, Eco Depot Day. So I hope to see you all there. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Does it require an appointment for everyone going?
No, no, it's just you need to make a...
Because I know in the past, everyone, no? Okay.
No appointment. Only if you miss the opportunity, you need to make a call, and then you can bring it up, and then that, come down to the DPW, and you can drop your stuff off.
So you only need to call if you miss it and you want to go to Johnston?
Correct.
Right, okay. But if you're going to go Saturday, you don't need any appointment?
Show up with your ugly yellow paint and drop it off.
That is 15 years old.
Does that include old paint cans and things like that?
Yep.
You can take it right in the can, get rid of it all?
Yep, bring it right down.
Good opportunity.
Great opportunity to get rid of those cans. Thank you, have a good evening.
Ms. Perella?
Okay, well, I want to concur with the chairman in terms of the, you know, thanking everyone involved at the Fourth of July, the Fourth of July Committee for all of their hard work in putting on a great celebration from Flag Day forward. The Police Department, I don't know, you guys are amazing, and everyone that you've worked with. I couldn't help but think of you, chief, and your department in particular, for breathing a sigh of relief when everything was over at 3:00, and nothing, thank God, had happened. You know, there was extra vigilance everywhere in the country, and I thought, wow, Homeland Security must have breathed a sigh of relief when everything was over in New York and everywhere else that night. So, thank you to your men and women, and for all the people that you contract with at work, you know, whether it's the local Sheriff Department, or I'm sure the FBI, and everyone who is here in force. DPW for always making the town look fabulous. I have to say, I think I told someone in the council this, but the... Had someone come over to our house, who is not usually involved with, you know, not usually here, Fourth of July, and they couldn't believe that people actually put the trash in the trash bags. July and they couldn't believe that people actually put the trash in the trash bags. And they said, wow, like, is it always like that? I said, yeah, since the trash bags have been out, so it's always been really good. But then it's always amazing that the town is spick and span by that next morning. You never know that anything had taken place. Certainly fire and rescue, again, for all the same reasons in terms of security and taking care of everything that happens to any of the people on the parade route or the marchers. And it's exceptionally large, I thought exceptionally large crowd this year, I think because it was not a beach day and it was a weekend and the sun wasn't beating down on people. So it looked like both sides of the street were pretty crowded to me. I know we've done this before, Jose always says, well, the sewer department gets overtaxed as well because of all these visitors. So to you and your people, you know, and.
Smooth running, nice job.
That's right, right. No, no problems there.
We don't want any backups.
We don't need that.
We don't want any fines from EPA.
Right. And so I thank, thank all, everyone for that. And I guess we're on to our next event in the community, which is Our Lady of Mount Carmel Festival, not this weekend, but the weekend, I don't know what the dates are, but probably around the 17th-ish, whatever that, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday is. And so someone said Fourth of July, well, it's over and now we move into whatever other events in Bristol. So we've, and we've heard several of them tonight. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stewart?
There's, there's not enough words to say thank you. I know it's becoming redundant, but to everybody, the Fourth of July Committee, all the volunteers, the Police Department, the fire, the public safety, all the departments, so I'm just going to just make it big in general, all the departments and especially all the residents who take their part in being vigilant to make sure that our town is secure altogether as a community, looking out for one another and having the respect for our, our law enforcement and our town and respecting it in that way when the visitors come. With all the events and the, and the concerts and all the time that we put into this, I was taking a back on Sunday before Fourth of July when I was reading the journal, there was an article by Bob Thayer that I thought was priceless. And I know it's late, I just, I believe that we always have enough time to say a few words for our veterans because we don't say it enough, especially when it comes to our American flag as of late on the respect as a nation. And he just, you know, in a short paragraph, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Selfless sacrifice at the North Burial Ground in Bristol, a salute to those who have served. Just a few steps away from the beginning of the parade route for the Bristol Fourth of July parade, there are hundreds of newly placed flags rustling in the breeze atop a large hill in the North Burial Ground. Many of us see them every day as we drive by and yet we really don't see them. Why not stop and reflect to reveal the true meaning? Each flag represents an individual who serves so that the rest of us can remain free. Each flag brings to mind the hundreds of thousands who made the ultimate sacrifice. Each flag recalls the times when our soldiers went boldly into harm's way, knowing they might never return. Each flag represents a family with those at home praying for their loved ones' safe return. Each flag represents people who did what they did not for themselves, but for all who have ever cherished true liberty and all of our military aides who have walked in this parade with us and all of us together. So I thought that was a wonderful tribute that Mr. Thayer did. Going onwards, like Mary said, the events for our town starting on July 16th, which is our consecutive Thursdays of concerts on the Common to bring your family and enjoy the nice weather. And I believe the rain date is still at St. Mary's Church and will conclude September 3rd with last night on September 6th of Labor Day weekend, which again, our departments will step up as usual on their routine of protecting our town and making sure everything's clean, safe and protected. And thank you, Michael, and our Sergeant of Arms Archie and everybody joining us here tonight for this long night of issues that we get through, one at a time. And everybody viewing at home, have a great summer.
Mr. Harrisaw?
Well, I'm going to take a one-meeting holiday on President George Washington's advice to those who are striving for civility because I've got a few ideas of my own to present.
But, but, no, not good.
First of all, I want to echo what you all said about the recent Fourth of July, it was magnificent and great credit needs to go to the Fourth of July Committee, to the Police Department, to the Public Works. And it's true that everybody just performed so well. We're lucky. A couple of other things I'd like to bring up. I was appalled this afternoon after getting some advice from a couple of residents to go over and visit the site of the new veterans home. Why in hell did they go in and mow down all those wonderful trees that lined the street going in? That was unnecessary. It's just as bad as anybody that buys a home lot and clears it off, builds a house and then spends a lot of money to put trees back. And I just think that whoever decided to knock down all those trees made a grievous mistake. They took a hundred years for them to grow and they could just as well build that facility without mowing everything down and the, and the trees. I'd like to ask that, that issue be investigated with whoever's the contractor there. So I'll say something more about that. Secondly, I had a couple of calls about the animal shelter and I think it's probably time since that wonderful facility's been there that the council gets something of a report of how the first eight to nine months have gone there, the number of animals, how many have been successfully conveyed to those and want to adopt them. I just think it'd be good for the council to know a little more about what's going on.
Agreed.
Is that something we could ask for, chief?
Absolutely. And speaking with regards to the town administrator, he and I had a conversation within the last 30 days, I think Julie might have been part of it, and there's a report being compiled to me and it'll be forwarded to the town administrator, who I know will share with you with regards to exactly what you're saying. The functionality of it.
And one small detail of that is, it's been asserted to me that all the new Apovites that were part of it died for some reason, maybe not enough watering, they had to buy new ones. So maybe that could be included as a footnote to the rest of it.
That's also being addressed. I addressed that with the animal control supervisor and that's something with the, the group that actually volunteered and raised the money to have those Apovites put in. My understanding they're going to be replaced at no cost.
That's good, that sounds good. Yeah. Also, chief, I know that security is a very important thing in the Fourth of July and that the effort this year was extraordinary, but I'm wondering, to ask you and also this listener, should we carefully develop a little stronger ordinance concerning the spectators there? Perhaps vetoing the possibility of bringing in knapsacks and bringing in large coolers? I, I just think that looking way ahead a whole year, maybe we could help your preparations for 2016 by a stronger ordinance.
I appreciate that. It's probably a conversation we could have on the sideline with regards to that, but that is, that is a concern both on the federal, state and local level. But I could tell you that we looked at those very carefully and everything was monitored as close as we possibly could.
Well, I, I think, I don't speak for everybody, but I think we'd be receptive to any request you might make that could assist in the picture.
I think that's a great idea. We should probably have a conversation with this listener and I can express some information I have received.
And one other thing, I drove a few times up and down Popsquash Road the last few days, and I've mentioned this before, but I think even though it's been made clear to me who's responsible for the bike path in this section, that, that we would be wise to erect a couple of signs there just to say, warning, approaching bike paths with hazard, just so that a driver coming along there would be more cognizant of the fact that there's a real danger to the fact that we intersect the bike paths.
Also, I agree with that and I think Walter could tell you, I have located both the message trailer every morning because of the group of individuals, the youngsters that are going down to the recreation town beach and one of our crosswalk signs are stationed on Asylum Road. But I think looking at Papa Squash or something, we could probably ask DEM if they could do that for us.
So we could maybe add a warning, they're both those critical locations.
That's correct.
Yeah. Well, I hope that doesn't happen. I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
The acting town administrator has nothing. Okay, so we have executive session.
So we'll convene into executive session pursuant to 42465A2 involving the Bristol Warren Regional School District litigation.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.